Okay, so call the meeting back to order. Okay. So we're gonna go back into public comment and if there's anyone that hasn't been up to express concerns they have or ask questions, then it's open now.
So I'm Robin Hoffman and I'm here today to announce something good and something I think is gonna help a lot, maybe not for this weekend, but for the rest of our lives, is that our city is digital now and that means that we can all participate online. Like if you wanna look at a budget, you can comment. It's very interactive and a lot of people don't realize that. But also, August 18th, if everybody could make note of it, Charlottesville Public Access TV is gonna have an orientation. And I'm encouraging everybody on this dais and everybody out here to please come to the orientation. It's free and it's at 10 o'clock and we're not sure if it's at CitySpace or here. But when you'll find out, there'll be an announcement on CPA TV website.org. And when you do look at the website, please put your name in there that you wanna do a program. Now, the programs are 28 minutes each. I've been doing it for nine years and I've raised money. So you can raise money for your private, your nonprofits or whatever you wanna do. But most importantly, I think, in these, why I come to the city council, I want to listen to people and people have a lot of ideas and I'm very happy to listen to these ideas. But also, doing a show, you have a possibility of being aired once or twice or, in my case, four times a week. And I just say whatever comes to my mind because it's Charlottesville Public Access. Seventy thousand people watch it. That means two people in every household who have Comcast watch it. You can also stream it, which means that every one of us can have a program. It's not on Facebook. You don't have to worry about Russian or Nazis. You're gonna be just talking to the people in your neighborhood. And your program can be something exciting. You know, you can, but once you start your program, you may have an idea. As you proceed over the years, you get better at it and then you have better things, more formats and things like that come to play. So I just wanna quickly say, after nine years, I've raised money for the free clinic, Wounded Warriors, 100 million black men. What?
Hundred million?
How many?
That would be a lot of us.
Wait, how many? What's the organization? What organization is it? I'm sorry.
Hundred black men.
Okay, so.
I think you're thinking of the Million Man March.
And all of it is because people want to be on my show because I made it after a while. My sister said I was boring and so I put video in there and everything. You can do that on your iPhone this year. This year, everything is digital. You can use your phone and you could sit here right now for 28 minutes and do whatever. So I'm imploring everybody here to sign up for the orientation on August 18th. This will sustain our free speech, which is very crucial in this culture of worrying about being able to have a platform and being able to speak and all that. And I just wanna say one last thing is that you are not Donald Trump. You are so far removed from anything like that. He isn't a person who, when I was in Brooklyn, was a criminal. And he always has been with the Russian mafia because that's how the city of New York is, was developed. So therefore, if anybody ever said that about you, first of all, there is nothing that he does that is like you. If he speaks from his heart, he doesn't have a heart. So that's not what you're doing. You're here dedicating yourself to the community because you believe very strongly that you want your kids and your family to have a good place. That's not what Donald Trump does. He wants to destroy everything good and he's been doing it. So I'm glad that very much that you're standing your ground each and every time. When I first came here, there was nobody in city council. It's because of you that people participate and I wanna thank you very much and that's all I have to say.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm masking the illusion. My name is Nancy Carpenter. I live here in the city. This is one of the reasons why I supported Ms. Walker's candidacy. I know that I've seen status quo for too long in my life and I wanted to see a change. That's what we started in 2008, that's what we started in 2012, and here locally is where it makes a difference. The local Democratic Party, whatever. You know, if they're representative of some of the people that I've seen come up here and talk about civility and status quo, no, thank you. I'd rather support other independents and people who are willing to have a difficult conversation because it was difficult. It was good to hear. It was good to be thinking really hard and critically about what is actually going on in this city, whether it's August 12th, whether it's regards to process, which I certainly think that there was some problems with. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I've always, you know, we all hear about jobs through the grapevine. I kinda, you know, that, but does it, is it supposed to work where, you know, that you're kind of, you know, pushed through? You don't really go through the whole, you know, rigmarole of being sought out. I mean, if this guy was, I don't even wanna talk about Mr. Zimp. And Mr. Sigur, please don't bring anybody's multiracial family members into a conversation. I had that type of conversation a couple of weeks ago with someone who, it doesn't matter, I mean, you can have multiracial people in your family and still be racist and still be white supremacist. It doesn't matter. Please don't do that because I do and I was highly embarrassed and kind of put off by that comment. Doesn't matter who's in their family or what their component is. As far as August 12th, one of the things I see is that two versions of the city right down at Exart Park, you're allowing, I mean, it's great that the vendors will be able to have a venue to, you know, make their money because it is important to them to be able to continue doing what they love to do. But it's also been a place where certain economic, and people who have certain economic levels are not able to go to, even with the availability of the EBT, if people are on EBT to use, because we don't even know if that's gonna be, you know, taken away with a certain cost cutting in the federal budget. So you're showing that you wanna have this for one section of our population and then right across the street, whether it's with their wanting or not, you're walling off a bunch of people. I don't get that. I don't understand that vision. I don't understand that vision. And how difficult, and I had somebody ask me that, how difficult is it to take a Virginia State trooper, give him a key, go to the Belmont Spray Park, turn the key on and let the water run? How difficult is that over a weekend? Really, how difficult is that? So let's think about everybody in this city because I don't, I'm not gonna be held hostage. I'm gonna be doing what I need to do that I feel comfortable in doing. But let's make sure that we're thinking outside the box for everybody. It's great to have a critical plan, great to have a unified command, maybe. But what's not good is to create a situation where they win. Okay, we have to deal with our own Nazis and our own white supremacists in our backyard. Let's not let the ones that think they wanna come in and, oh, one other thought, they'll be having guns. This time, there won't be such a number of militias where I think that created a situation where gunplay didn't come into the situation. But when I think about individuals dribbing and drabbing into the city that are gonna be probably exercising their two ways, I mean, you know, if I had, if I had, I would. But let's think about that, the proclivity of that kind of happening. I'm sure that's, you know, part of the conversation that the unified command has had. But, you know, let's not live in fear. We lived in fear September the 11th and I thought that we've come far enough from that, that we're not gonna let, live in fear. I'm not gonna live in fear. That's not what it's about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Walker, do you mind if I respond? Ms. Carpenter, I respect your opinion a lot and it would, I would understand how that would bother you. I might not have expressed it very artfully. There's a lot of noise when I was saying that. But my concern wasn't the fact that she was, if I could just, it was that what, from what I understood, she really went through a hard time when his name was being dragged through the mud and they were looking at moving to a new city, starting a new life together. And what I understood is that it was very hard for her personally, in part because of her background. And that was the point I was trying to make. It was a difficult, kinda more subtle point than I could made and that's what it was about. It was not, but I can understand how you heard that and I'm sorry, that is not what I meant to claim, so.
Would anyone else like to speak?
So this is gonna be redundant, but I wrote it and I just wanna add to the chorus of voices. I'm Zoe. I live in the county. What are community members who want to come together over this weekend supposed to do? Where are we supposed to go? No permits issued to peaceful locals, limited access, closures, lockdown, military state. Why is the entry to McIntyre Park closed? We, as a community, went through a collective trauma last year. Many of us want to come together this year and celebrate our resiliency, a word that city leadership has now co-opted. We want to celebrate the new relationships we forged this past year through our shared and our diverse experience, our defense of each other, our slow work at dismantling Charlottesville's very special brand of white supremacy. We want to celebrate our community together, not huddle, isolated in our homes. We want to live that hashtag, Seaville Strong. Where can we do that? Why haven't you reserved the Charlottesville Pavilion for us? If you want us to come downtown, why haven't you extended a public invitation for us to show up? Why aren't these troops of police escorting us to one of the parks, guarding the edges, turning their backs toward us and facing towards the outwards to protect us from the vague and looming threat? Cops are being shipped in to guard empty streets, a ghost town. Cops who are likely to turn on our own community if we even make an attempt to own our streets. That is the reputation they have and thus they are intimidating people as much as the Nazis. Police presence escalates tension. Do you know of a credible threat? Is there something you aren't telling us? What makes you think we'll feel safe on August 18th, on August 25th? Where do we go as a community? Why can't you keep our streets safe and invite our citizens to assemble simultaneously?
Free clinic, wounded warriors, 100 million black men. Um, what?
Hundred million?
How many?
That would be a lot of us.
Wait, how many? What's the, what's the organization? What organization is it? I'm sorry.
Hundred black men.
Okay, so.
I think you think it's the Million Man March.
And, and all of it is because people want to be on my show because I made it after a while. My sister said I was boring and so I put video in there and everything else. You can do that on your iPhone this year. This year, everything is digital. You can use your phone and you could sit here right now for 28 minutes and do whatever. So, um, I'm imploring everybody here to sign up for the orientation on August 18th. This will sustain our free speech, which is very crucial in this, uh, culture of worrying about being able to have a platform and being able to speak and all that. And I just want to say one last thing is that, um, you are not Donald Trump. You are so far removed from anything like that. He isn't a person who, when I was in Brooklyn, was a criminal. And he always has been with the Russian mafia because that's how the city of New York is, was developed. So therefore, if anybody ever said that about you, um, first of all, there is nothing that he does that is like you. If he speaks, um, from his heart, he doesn't have a heart. So, that's not what you're doing. You're here dedicating yourself, uh, to the community because you believe very strongly that you want your kids and your family to have a good place. That's not what Donald Trump does. He wants to destroy everything good and he's been doing it. So, I'm glad that, very much, that you're standing your ground each and every time. When I first came here, there was nobody in city council. It's because of you that people participate. And I want to thank you very much and that's all I have to say.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Unmasking the illusion. My name is Nancy Carpenter. I live here in this city. This is one of the reasons why I supported Ms. Walker's candidacy. I know that I've seen status quo for too long in my life and I wanted to see a change. That's what we started in 2008, that's what we started in 2012. And here locally is where it makes a difference. The local Democratic Party, whatever. You know, if they're representative of some of the people that I've seen come up here and talk about civility and status quo, no thank you. I'd rather support other independents and people who, who are willing to have a difficult conversation because it was difficult. It was good to hear. It was good to be thinking really hard and critically about what is actually going on in this city, whether it's August 12th, whether it's regards to process, which I certainly, uh, think that there was some problems with. I mean, uh, as far as I'm concerned, I've always, you know, we all hear about jobs through the grapevine. I kinda, you know, that, but does it, is it supposed to work where, you know, that you're kind of, you know, pushed through? You don't really go through the whole, you know, rigmarole of, of being sought out? I mean, if, if this guy was, I don't even want to talk about Mr. Zimp, um, and Mr. Singer, please don't bring anybody's multiracial family members into a conversation. I had that type of conversation, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, uh, with someone who, it doesn't matter, I mean, you can have multiracial people in your family and still be racist and still be white supremacist. It doesn't matter. Please don't do that because I do and, and I was highly embarrassed and, and kind of, um, uh, put off by, by that comment. Doesn't matter, um, who's in their family or what their component is. As far as August 12th, one of the things I see is that, um, uh, two versions of the city right down at Exart Park, you're allowing, I mean, it's, it's great that the vendors will be able to have a venue to, you know, make their money because it, it is important to them to be able to continue doing what they love to do. But it's also, um, been a, a place where certain economic, uh, and people who have certain economic levels are not able to go to, even with the availability of the EBT, if people are on EBT to use, because we don't even know if that's going to be, you know, taken away with a certain cost cutting in the federal budget. So you, you're showing that you want to have this for one section of our population and then right across the street, whether it's with their wanting or not, you're, you're walling off a bunch of people. I don't get that. I don't understand that vision. I don't understand that vision. And how difficult, and I had somebody ask me that, how difficult is it to take a Virginia State trooper, give him a key, go to the Belmont Spray Park, turn the key on and let the water run? How difficult is that over a weekend? Really, how difficult is that? So, let's think about everybody in this city because I don't want, I'm not going to be held hostage. I'm going to be doing what I need to do, um, that I feel comfortable in doing. But let's make sure that we're thinking outside the box for everybody. It's great to have a, a critical plan, great to have a unified command, maybe. But what's not good is to create a situation where they win. Okay, we have to deal with our own Nazis and our own white supremacists in our backyard. Let's not let the ones that think they want to come in. And, oh, one other thought, um, they'll be having guns. This time there won't be such, uh, a number of militias where I think that created a situation where gunplay didn't come into the situation. But when I think about individuals dribbing and drabbing into the city that are going to be probably exercising their two A's, I mean, you know, if I had, if I had, I would. But, uh, let's think about that, the proclivity of that kind of happening. I'm sure that's, you know, part of the conversation that the unified command has had. But, you know, let's not live in fear. We lived in fear September the 11th and I thought that we've come far enough from that, that we're not going to let, live in fear. I'm not going to live in fear. That's not what it's about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Walker, do you mind if I respond? Um, Ms. Carpenter, I respect your opinion a lot and it would, I would understand, um, how that would bother you. I might not have expressed it very artfully. Um, there's a lot of noise when I was saying that, but my concern wasn't the fact that she was, if, if I could just, it, it was that what, from what I understood, she really went through a hard time when his name was being dragged through the mud and they were looking at moving to a new city, starting a new life together. And what I understood is that it was very hard for her personally, in part because of her background. And that was the point I was trying to make. It was a difficult, kind of more subtle point than I could made and, but I, but, and that's what it was about. It was not, but I can understand how you heard that and I'm sorry, that is not what I meant to, to claim, so.
Would anyone else like to speak?
So, this is going to be redundant, redundant, but, um, I wrote it and I just want to add to the chorus of voices, I'm Zoe, I live in the county. What are community members who want to come together over this weekend supposed to do? Where are we supposed to go? No permits issued to peaceful locals, limited access, closures, lockdown, military state? Why is the entry to McIntyre Park closed? We, as a community, went through a collective trauma last year. Many of us want to come together this year and celebrate our resiliency, a word that city leadership has now co-opted. We want to celebrate the new relationships we forged this past year through our shared and our diverse experience, our defense of each other, our slow work at dismantling Charlottesville's very special brand of white supremacy. We want to celebrate our community together, not huddle, isolated in our homes. We want to live that hashtag, Seaville Strong. Where can we do that? Why haven't you reserved the Charlottesville Pavilion for us? If you want us to come downtown, why haven't you extended a public invitation for us to show up? Why aren't these troops of police escorting us to one of the parks, guarding the edges, turning their backs toward us and facing towards the, outwards to protect us from the vague and looming threat? Cops are being shipped in to guard empty streets, a ghost town. Cops who are likely to turn on our own community if we even make an attempt to own our streets. That is a reputation they have and thus they are intimidating people as much as the Nazis. Police presence escalates tension. Do you know of a credible threat? Is there something you aren't telling us? What makes you think we'll feel safe on August 18th, on August 25th? Where do we go as a community? Why can't you keep our streets safe and invite our citizens to assemble simultaneously? Please, if possible, find a solution to this so that we can come together in large numbers with protection. Thank you.
I promise somebody I would behave. Good evening, my name is Joy Johnson. I reside at 802 A Hard Drive. I'm here tonight to speak, um, of support for Nakia Walker. I don't know what happened earlier because I wasn't here, I was at work. But I do want to share something with you all. There is this person in my life, Nakia's life, in this community, um, community also, who liked to plant seeds. And one of the seeds she planted was that Nakia was capable, intelligent, smart and black enough to run for city council. And that was Holly Edwards. And I know she's smiling at you today, Nakia, don't cry, boo. Because you have done exceptionally, exceptionally well to stand up to the bullshit that's been thrown at you.
Joy, you're killing me.
I'm just telling the truth. For the rest of you who knew Holly Marie Edwards, you all need to take a page out of her book. Cause while she was on council, there were some people that was mean to her. But she strived through it and still worked with what she had to work with to improve the things that she wanted to improve. But collectively, she did work and support. She may not have agreed, but she was a consensus person. All of you should be shaming yourself for what you all are expressing to us out in the community as a board. I have a board. Half of them may like me, I don't know. Some of them may love me. But one of the things I know is, I, I can't do anything without the arms and the legs, we, which is my board. We're in consensus. A board is supposed to work together. The chair, the mayor, whatever you want to call it, is just the person that making sure the arms and the legs work. And if y'all not going to work with the head, what's going to happen to the body? Shame on you for what I am seeing. Y'all can take it personal, I really don't care. She's the first African-American woman who was cer, who has been mayor. If she's weak in some area, help her. Be a team player. Everybody is watching. I am so sick of people calling me from out of town, asking, what's wrong with that city council and why they treating, uh, um, Nakia like that? They may not know the story. I don't know the whole story about everything that goes on. But our board look at how you all are acting and we're saying what. Please set a better example of what's going on. This is not how council is supposed to run. Based on Holly Edwards' behavior on that council, when she was treated shabbily, nobody stood up for her because she told me to keep my mouth. I kept my mouth shut, I know that, that, that thing is going, but I'm going to finish. Based on Dave Norris, who came through far, ran for city council, won because he was a people person, based on Holly Edwards who came through far, ran for city council and won because she was, you know why they ran? Same reason Nakia ran. They wanted to be a part of change. They wanted to use that one vote to change what they could and can. And when all the, when, when the other four of you, or three of you, cause take three votes, or two of you doesn't support her and work with her, guess what? Make you all look weak. So I just want to say, I expect better out of you all because when I come before you all and represent far, y'all expecting for me to be, for us to have a best, an example. You know what I'm saying? Even with the ABRT, if we ain't doing right, y'all say, oh, y'all weak and you don't give us no money. I just plead to you all that your behavior needs to change. Just like the cop, just like the, the chief of police saying, this weekend is about people's behavior. This is about y'all behavior and everybody is watching. And if y'all want to keep, because y'all claim y'all love Sister Holly Edwards so much, if y'all want to keep her memory, y'all need to do the right thing. Just do the right thing. Whatever happened between you and Heather today, or Heather, whatever happened, it should have never happened. That's the first thing I hear when I walked in here, how that behavior was so transparent. I plead to you all, Nakia, I can't be here every Monday. And one of the things Holly taught me is that, and everybody at home, what used to make her feel very, very strong is when she could see black faces in this neighborhood. So all y'all out there who say you all love Sister Holly Edwards, y'all need to start packing this chambers, regardless of whether it's about the behavior of the council or whatever it is, just show up. Ms. Ga, Ms. Gavin, we'll talk later because what I'm about to say, you might think I'm just being personal, but sometimes God do things for a reason. Sometimes you may want to be in a place, but he know better because he on time God. So what he does is he move you in the spot where you need to be and he put other people in the same spot. That's what I do believe. Ev- everything happened for, my grandma used to say, all things come together for the greater good.
And I think the good Lord put me in your life.
Yeah.
We need each other, I think, Joy.
You know what, you know what Kathy? He do, because each and every time that you say something, it just makes me realize that, you know what? She still don't get it. But it's okay because it, we are here to learn. I, I, I don't want to be preaching, but I find myself preaching, but I'm just saying, come on everybody, you talking about preparation for this weekend and y'all acting like this? You think HBO was in the room? You think that's not going to get publicized? Come on now. Come on. That's all I got to say.
And I do have one, um, one comment that I would like to, since, um, Joy has brought it up, if I get in, um, trouble with the Edwards family, I will just say Joy started it. But one thing that I would often say to Holly was, um, because she was, she is, she was a very different, different person than I am and she was, um, I mean, phew, just if you could even figure that out, right? How to, how to do what she did. And it took me a while of watching her to realize that she was saying things that I say, just in a much, um, you know, more calm and gentle, gentle fashion than I. But I think what Joy just brought up that I want to make very clear is, the charge that I received from Holly, who often sat in rooms and put her head down, um, and then looked at me, um, directly. And then we would go out to lunch and we would chat about it, was to keep doing what I was doing exactly the way that I was doing it. And I want to remind you all that even though I have not been given permission to share what she has shared with us, the things that Joy is talking about, I'm aware of everybody. A lot of the conversations that she had with people in this community, that even with her gentle spirit, she was completely disrespected and railroaded, even though she did not present the same way that I present. And I'm waiting for the day that the, um, Edwards family gives me permission to share the information. I have, um, a journal that I was given. I've been told that information that is being packed up, that I can have access to it. And from the one that I have, um, just some proof to some of the things, you know, that, that we might say. So I, so that's my point here, is that if you knew Holly, you knew how different we were. And still, the charge I got from her was to keep doing what I'm doing exactly the way you're doing it. And that is what I intend to do.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Olivia Patton, city resident. At the beginning of this meeting, we discussed, or it was brought to our attention, the severance pay of Maurice Jones, which is a very comfy severance I hope to make in my personal life, what he makes in his retirement. Um, but in the agenda for today, there was a very pared down version of Mike Murphy's, um, new agreement of work. And it appears from that agreement that he's taken on all this new, um, responsibility as city manager, free of charge, um, because it looks like a lot of that contract was redacted. And I think it's fair for the city residents to know exactly what you're benefiting from taking this position. It's a huge position. I assume there are benefits. I don't know what they are. I think people would like to know what they are, how much it's going to cost, are you going to make a lot of money in your retirement also? I foiled all of the information on all the contacts between you all about the city manager and interim city manager, um, decision since May 23rd. I have not received that. I'm sure Brian is full of other stuff and from how crazy this meeting has been, I imagine there's a lot of really not important emails I'm going to have to wade through, um, in order to understand what you guys are talking about and who's gaslighting who, because it seems like somebody's gaslighting somebody and I can only assume it's the white man because that is how history has always done it. So I am excited to finally get that after a couple of weeks. I know Brian is working on it, I trust him. I would love to know what you're making as our interim city manager, um, for real, not just your assistant city manager salary. And, um, I think that could be public information.
All right, is there anyone else?
Uh, hey, my name's Rory Stolzenberg. Um, I live on Water Street, uh, between First and Second in York Place. Um, I'm just going to talk for a minute, um, about, uh, a little bit more mundane specific details about, uh, this weekend's preparations. So, so I share Councilor Bellamy's, um, firmness in not letting, uh, Nazis intimidate us to stay inside of our homes, um, what a Jewish friend of mine calls "and franking it." And, uh, I hope that we can, uh, sort of differentiate, um, closing city services down, um, which I think has been pretty well covered before, and, uh, closing streets down to traffic. I think, uh, we all saw on August 12th last year, I certainly saw, um, that cars are probably the biggest weapon to be, uh, afraid of. And I think there's not any real good reason to have through traffic going through Water Street. You can access the meter lot via South Street. You could potentially open a small, tiny bit of Water Street to access the credit card lot if, uh, we insisted that, um, needs to be open. And I hear the point, um, about, uh, people coming to the Downtown Mall, um, and needing a place to park. Um, I hope that some people do come to the Downtown Mall. I think, uh, we should welcome protesters to the mall. I think we should welcome people, uh, frequenting the merchants to the mall. One specific suggestion I have on that is, I understand that the city buses are all being diverted, or rather, the Downtown Transit Station is being essentially moved to the Avon Street Park and Ride, um, which presumably has a lot of parking. It might make sense to make a shuttle, um, if one of the buses doesn't already, uh, go past the mall and the changed routes that haven't all looked at. Uh, but it might make sense to have a free shuttle, bring people from that park and ride to the mall. That's what I got. One last thing, um, I applaud Michael Payne, who I think is not here anymore. Um, his concern about, uh, the housing crisis in Charlottesville, I think that's the most important issue facing us. Um, one solution he did not mention, um, that I think really needs to be said, is we need more housing units, um, of all kinds. Um, so when developers come up with you, it's come up to you with plans, you should be asking them to, why they're not building more units in their project and not to build less because neighbors nearby are complaining that their million dollar house, houses might, have their property values impaired. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Marissa Tana Harris, um, city resident. I pulled up a quote because I feel like this is what we need to look at right now. And the quote says, "If you want to see the true measure of a male, watch how he treats his inferiors, not his equals." And that's by J.K. Rowling. You, you are very disrespectful. Like, I've watched all day, you sat on your phone and not paid attention and you want us to support you, but you're on your phone throughout this whole meeting. Nakia, I applaud you once again. You came from nothing, you made yourself. You are the first black woman in Charlottesville, just like that we had the first black president. Oh, Jesus, you're just a backstabber. You are. Uh, my mama told me, don't sugarcoat anything. And what you did today in this meeting, you backstabbed Nakia like it was the best. You are a Trump supporter. You are his minion. Because what you did, you should have took that off, off the chart, off the record. You could have had that conversation with her behind closed doors. And that's the thing that I do not like. And y'all want to support each other, what you did was very disrespectful. You could have had this conversation a whole nother time. It's my time, I don't want you to comment. But I feel that with this, where you want us to support you, we don't have any support. Last year, we had cops everywhere and still people were injured. I was out there, I seen it all. You had the blockades. Blockades didn't even work, so how can you say, we're going to have a lot of police? How do we know that the police are actually going to do their job this year? We pay our taxes to be protected and we were not protected last year. I have a four-year-old where I had to explain to him what racism actually is. And what you did, that's racism. What you act like, that's racism. You're demeaning everyone in this community. Because y'all have y'all like big houses, green, come live on the side of the tracks where we live so you can experience what it is like. Until you do that, I don't want to hear, oh, we support our people. Because it's nothing to be said. Y'all, where are y'all going this weekend? Y'all going on a vacation? Where, wherever y'all are going, y'all not out here where we are. I live in Friendship Court. So I'm right there. Last year, I was right there. So until I see y'all standing beside us, supporting us, we have no faith in y'all. So with Nakia, Wes Bellamy, he, they already know. My mama didn't raise no fool. She, she told me, close mouths, don't get fed. And I'mma eat today. And you're going to learn. And Ms. Kathy, I don't know what this is, but it's like you're a little puppet. You can't let somebody drag you along. You have to stand on your own two feet. And Singer, I don't know what the hell wrong with you. You just need to go pray. And I just, Mr. Murphy, honey, I pray for you. Cause they going to have you in a hell fit of rage. You want us to support you, show us that you're supporting us. With this parking, just because it's no parking on Second Street doesn't mean people aren't going to figure out a way to get there. Last year, the Nazis came to our schools, the children's schools. Now imagine you going to schooling, I have, he, my son was three. So you have to explain to him, son, it's racist people, they're out here to hurt you. Until you understand what that feels like, this is basically Vinegar Hill all over again. And I'm not going for it. Last year, I didn't go for it. This year, I'm not going for it. So you can do what you gotta do, or feel how you feel about it, but this is how I feel. And I'm not taking it this year. So if you want to stand beside us, come on with it. If not, hiding your big house, going on a nice vacation. But until then, come on our side, see actually how it feels, to look over there. So until you do that, I don't want to say I support my people. Thank you.
So I will say, cause I've heard it a couple of times tonight, I mean, I, it, with transparency, you welcome the entire discussion. I mean, it's been quite, um, interesting, especially to hear, um, Counselor Signer's, um, interpretation of the conversations that we had, right? Um, so whatever has been said, like, I have been able to speak. I think everybody has, you know, and deserves that right to present what they know to, to be facts and, and to be true. Um, and I don't think that I've heard anything from anyone except Signer that I would, um, say, you know, that I would question. I would, I don't even know how to, um, defend against what he has going on here, honestly, so, um, but I feel like, um, based on the conversations that we've had, um, and I hope that I have attempted to clear up, um, anything that, um, was misunderstood between what, um, and I still feel like I made the right choice, and I would make it again. And I am going to have conversation later this evening about still the continuation of the, um, interim process. Um, and I have had those conversations publicly. I was on the Shilling Show earlier talking about them. So I am making this commitment, um, that to be in, um, open and transparent. And other people have a right to, um, respond to that. And just as long as we, you know, we're clear there. You're here.
The reason I came up because, um, first of all,
Ms. Cherry, Ms. Cherry, just for the record.
Oh, put it down a little bit. Okay.
Say your name.
Oh, I'm Cherry Henley. I was a ci- uh, city resident, but anyway, I moved. But anyway, I'm still here. Um, I was a county resident. Um, but I wanted to share because watching that, what you were talking about, that's what happens in agencies and all around. Whenever we decide that we want to make a statement, or we have an opinion, they collaborate against us and figure out how they can kick us out. That's exactly what's going on. You wanted to take up for her, cause she is your Caucasian person. That's the bottom line. And that's how it happens all the time. I see it constantly. You, what you're trying to do is make her look back and speak against her. And I appreciate you, Wes, for standing up for her. Because, and number one, we commend you, because you're trying to work any community, and there's nothing wrong with that. And for some reason, I've been having a conversation, I get so mad, I can't even come up here. I get so mad, because first of all, we're talking, and I've brought it up many times before, we're talking about the dang on KKK. Do you get this? They're trying to kill us. They are trying to kill us. You see it anywhere. They're trying, the school systems, you know about what they're doing to blacks. They're doing it in the jobs around here. I take people to jobs all the time, they're doing it. And not only that, if they can't incarcerate them, they want to kill them. Stop playing games. I talked to my, like I shared with you, Kathy, I talked to my nine-four-year-old this morning. You know what she said? I said, "I gotta get your opinion." She said, "Honey, take God with you." Take God with you. That's what she said. But she still said, she said, "I don't know, baby, why they keep letting them people come." You got, there's a time in life when you gotta stand up for what's right. I will preach, I will give my testimony in my situation, like I shared with you, Kathy. I'm an ex-offender. Do you know what that does to me? To, to, you locked me up. My mother was dying when you locked me up. She was dying. Now they can roam your street. There's no law now. There's no law now, is it? But you had them for me. You had them for me. You had them for all the blackmail that you're throwing down on the ground. You got them for that. But then you, you can't come up with a law. So what, Mike, you was on the DMC. Why is he here? Why is he here? When he was on that DMC, Shamoy's gone, Jeff Fogel, I can name all of them secretly. He dogged us. Every time we brought the word of grace, you got mad. You were there. You got mad. We told you what the problem was, didn't we? But you saw a lie. God revealed it. Huh? You ain't, you are fakey powerful, but there is some powerful in you. He revealed it to you in the staff, what was going on, didn't he? Huh? What a life. But it wasn't ours, was it? What an house. But they came to kill us. That's what they came to do. And that's what you gotta get in your head. That's what you gotta get in your head. And somewhere in life, you got to learn to stand for what's right. I don't care about no job. Nakaya don't care. That's a woman. You gotta stand for what's right. Are you gonna make a decision to stand for what's right? That's what it boils down to.
Anybody else? Yeah, but we said that it would be open.
I just need to ask a question. With, with Sunday being what it is, and with, I understand, some six hundred state troopers being in town this weekend. Preferably, the, uh, the governor will release the National Guard to us as well this weekend. Are there any plans to have law enforcement, not necessarily in religious services, but on call and available to churches, if necessary? Um, at least on the periphery, on the perimeter, to be, if nothing else, just the optics, just the visual of someone being there to protect our churches, our mosques, and our synagogues?
We're not gonna talk about where people are gonna be posted, but I will say, Mr. Gather says that, um, the chief has spoken at every public meeting about vulnerable populations. And what you're talking about is, uh, different communities of people who we've identified, uh, would be at risk. And so, yes, there is a plan to, uh, be responsive to churches, synagogues, and mosques.
All right. So.
This is real quick, cause I'm just curious to know, why was that meeting held when the, um, when people were gone?
What meeting?
The, 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 the meeting about, yeah, the one where we were on the pilgrimage. Like, why was the plan even given when two council members were com- but they weren't even here? Like, I'm, I, yeah, yeah, and, you know, you, you was there. You came. You missed your flight. I just don't want to know why.
You said you had one question.
But this is rebound off of it. I'm just curious. Like, why, why do we, why we always end up, like, right here? Like, why, why do, do y'all, I think y'all like, some of y'all, just like, for us to come in here. As much as y'all say, you know, "Don't come in here being disrespectful, don't shut the meeting down", why do we continue going through this? Like, why, I, I really want, I, and I think this is a fair question that y'all should answer, um, you know, right now. It's, it's not as many people in here. But like, I feel like we deserve a right to know, like, why do y'all do the things that y'all do? Like, why? And, 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 you know, you, uh, you, I'm not gonna even consider you being new, cause you was assistant city manager, so you've been here. You still play some type of role apart. But why do we continue to be where we are? Just why? Now, I know why, from my point of view, why we here. But why, like, why, we, we can't move forward till y'all want to move forward, though. Like, y'all gotta really do better with, with respecting that this lady is the mayor, with respecting that when y'all have any type of meeting, that she should be present. I don't care about being on the phone. Stuff get misconstrued all the time on the phone. We all played the telephone game in elementary school when the message get turned around by the time it gets to the end of the line. We gotta stop this. Like, I don't know what beef y'all got with Mayor Walker. I don't know why y'all want to continue to bring outsiders in, when we already have an issue on the inside. You know, we can't keep putting a Band-Aid on a, a sword that needs surgery. We need to do surgery, and we need to go ahead and, and get whatever infection out. This is, we dealing with a, a, a cancer tumor here, and it's spreading, and it's getting worse. And eventually, we have to, we have to really get to a point that we figure out a way to really make things work. And I don't know what it's gonna take. Obviously, I don't know either, but y'all get paid to figure it out. I don't. Um, but like, why do we, why, why do we keep being here? Why is stuff continuing to be leaked? Why do people keep targeting the cow? Why you keep wanting to notify the news? Like, why, why, why? Jadakiss why? Maybe I need to play the song for people to understand, but why?
Thank you.
No answer.
I don't have, I don't even.
If anybody want to comment, I, I need one before I leave out of here tonight.
I know that after that first community meeting, Mr., it was raised, and Mr. Wheeler said that certainly was not any intention to overlap with the, that was not, unfortunately, which is an oversight, quite frankly, um, in terms of that timing. There were other community meetings that took place. And in terms of council being there, we typically have had like one or two counselors there, cause counselors aren't engaged in the meetings. It's, it's the, it's the staff presenting them, and we're there to, to be there to listen to the community's, um, comments and, and to understand the concerns that are being raised, so we can represent the community. But I know specifically for that day, it was raised that evening, that that was a conflict, and it, quite honestly, just was an oversight, was nothing intentional.
Tanisha, can I try to answer your question?
Go ahead, Mike.
Tanisha, I, I don't know. Me, I, I'm try, I s- We sat down for an hour and a half talking about your business idea, and I tried to connect you, you know, we, I, we tried to make friends, and I, I really cared. I did, I did. And tried to help you, and, and tried to work, and just tried to help. And I was, I've seconded Nakaya's. Well, no, it's not personal, because I'm saying, I, I would like your ideas on how to try to help, because I'm, and I, I was, I, this is very painful for me, because I was, I really was trying to support our mayor up until, and I even praised, praised our mayor in public on Monday. We voted on a ton of things together. I praised her in the discussion of the mayorship specifically. Praised your conduct of the city attorney job privately, was working, was very much trying. But this was very hard, because when our, when our rules and when trust, as she said, when, when you knew that a consequence of this was gonna be breaking the trust among us, it is very hard to figure out a path forward.
And like I told you, like,
So I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that, I, I'm, I'm trying to answer your question. So I would like, I, I'm, I'm struggling, and if you have ideas, I would like to try.
And so, as I have, um, expressed to Counselor Signer, I made a comment in a meeting that expressed to council what my intentions were, which is very different, um, than when you don't express those intentions, um, to your colleagues openly, um, and honestly, before you act on them. And so, maybe that's a, where, where the struggle is. Um, and so, we've had some very heated, you know, discussions. And in my opinion, the comments that you keep making to me, you don't have a right to make. And I will keep telling you that, until you think about it and do something different.
And don't always point out what's weak for somebody, because at the end of the day, which, what, uh, us sitting down talking about IT business, because that's what, that wasn't even necessary for you to bring up. But once again, see, you don't even be paying attention to what you be doing sometimes. This had nothing to do with business. This is personal. You dealing with a city that's trying to heal and trying to get over what has happened here, and a lot of people let us down. That has nothing to do with sitting down and talking about, like, black people wanting to start a business or bring black business to Charlottesville. Stay on topic. That's how we get off. Again, like I said, with the telephone game, the message gets misconstrued. So that, we, we, we want to keep riding the track this way. We not gonna go back that way. But it's okay. I, I appreciate it.
Okay. All right, so is there?
So my name is Joy Johnson, again, and whatever. So, you know, their perception in the community, and in our community from where we sit, the turmoil, I feel, happened when you became mayor and Kathy didn't. That's what we see, and that's what we, that's the, that's what we have, that's the conclusion that we have came to. And that instead of supporting, there is just a con- 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 what's the word I'm looking for y'all?
Concerted.
Concerted effort to make her fail, the same way they did Obama. Today, just, I'm just telling you, you want to know what our community is thinking, Heather? And, and, and Heather, I told you before, you know, you and I have had a conversation. I don't have too much conversation with you, because I said, "You're, you're, you're tied to his hip." And that's how the community saw you. But then I started trying to trust you, because Nakaya convinced me that you all could be a team. So I'm just saying, everybody want to, you know, I, the question was asked, "Why?"
Well, I know why.
I was just saying, the question was asked, "Why"? I think we just need to put it all there. Put it, y'all being transparent, let's be transparent. Everybody feel like you still pissed off because you became the mayor. That's how people feel. That's how people feel. And we knew that there was gonna be some decisiveness going on behind that to make her fail. But baby, I had a conversation with you about the New Orleans, um, mayor. I'll talk to you later about that.
All right, so.
If I could just make a, a point. We vote, uh, the way we think, uh, our conscience drives us. And sometimes it's four-one, sometimes it's three-two, sometimes it's five-o. And that, that's the way it's been going. And so, I think, right now, the turmoil you've seen on this council is when there was a three-o vote, there was a belief that that, that was not kind of let to rest. And so, I'm, I am committed to making this council work. We have to move forward. We're all here because we love the city. I love the city. I raised my sons here. I've been here for thirty-five years. Um, I'm, I want us to get to the next part of the agenda, which is to talk about what is that process to, to find the new permanent city manager? What is that process that involves you in that decision, so that we don't have this disagreement? None of us thought we needed to have this process, a public process, for an interim appointment. And that's the honest-to-God truth.
Why would you not think that after what happened, okay?
But, but, because we, we, we appointed an interim police chief, that was done directly by the city manager. We didn't even invol- get ourselves involved with it. We had an interim city attorney. We weren't even involved with that. The city manager did it. An interim position was not anything that we would-
For a city manager lady that's making decisions after what happened August the twelfth, you didn't think that nobody needed to say nothing about that?
That was a, that was a council decision. That was a council decision.
That was everybody's decision.
And we're, and we're, and we're here committed to make a public process to pick the permanent city manager. I'm just, I'm just, I just needed to make a statement.
A council decision that was obviously not the right decision, given what you're hearing tonight. So I'm sure it was a council decision. It was a poor decision. So I'm sure it was a council decision, it was a poor decision.
That's all I had to say, there.
So, um, and I do want, I do have one point Joy just said. Again, I don't want anyone to think that my conversations regarding, um, any member of council, especially Heather, what, um, Joy said about team, I just wanna make sure before I see something in the news or get some emails, is, um, that I thought, um, and from observing Counselor Hill, talking to her, that when she's presented with information, that she, um, was thorough in her response to it and that she was respectful, um, in terms of all the ideas that were presented to her and that, um, you know, just in terms of thinking things through. And I have had this conversation with, um, a lot of people in this room about, um, you know, giving, um, people an opportunity, right? And I'm not even saying, I, I, I wanna make it clear that I'm not saying just because of how, what has happened or how I currently feel that it is something that I even, um, take back. I just wanna make it, we haven't agreed, um, on a, a lot of issues, but that did not change, um, how I saw her work. So I just wanna make sure this was not, uh, we are gonna agree in everything, if I say something or if she say something, that team in that manner, but just, but just being, um, I just wanna make sure that people, because just some of the conversations that have just been going on anyway, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear.
That, you know, I got encouragement from somebody who respected her. When I was feeling like I couldn't trust, that's all I wanted her to know. You ain't talking to me about nobody, I wanted her to know that how I, why, the reason I started having a conversation with you, Heather, was because she saw something in you that could work with me and my neighborhood. That's all I, and if the newspaper want anything, they can come and ask me, but you wouldn't know, you don't talk to me about, you didn't have to even explain that.
And it wasn't just for you, okay? All right, so we're gonna, um, move, um, on to the consent agenda. Um, Ms. Rice, could you read it, please?
Item A, minutes for July sixteenth. Item B, an appropriation mountainside funding request for memory care unit, fifty thousand dollars, second of two readings. Item C, an appropriation twenty eighteen nineteen safe routes to school non-infra structure grant, seventy-seven thousand dollars, second of two readings. Item D, an appropriation Virginia Department of Social Services employment for temporary aid to needy families participants grant, first renewal, sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars, second of two readings. Item E, an appropriation additional funding for Medicaid expansion, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars, first of two readings. Item F, an appropriation additional funding for Department of Social Services view program, twelve thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars, first of two readings. Item G, an appropriation strategic energy initiatives, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents, first of two readings. Item H, a resolution approving policy to conduct electronic meetings under the Virginia Freedom of, um, and the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, first of one reading. Item I, a resolution amending city council regular meeting schedule for two thousand and eighteen, first of one reading. Item J, an ordinance release of a stormwater management agreement across five fifty water street, second of two readings. Item K, an ordinance closing a portion of the Coleman Street right of way, second of two readings. And item L, an ordinance regulation of small cell wireless facilities and public rights of way, second of two readings.
Mayor Walker, I have to offer one amendment. And that we table, um, item A, minutes for July sixteen until we have the minutes posted.
Okay.
Is there a second? Second?
And, um, I would like to pull, um, each until we can discuss it. I don't know whether, um, it's at the end of this meeting or if we can put it on maybe the next, um, agenda, but I do wanna have more discussion.
I would second that, but I would only request Mayor Walker that we, uh, discuss it at the next meeting.
I agree.
All right, is there, do we need to vote on each of those individually or? No? Okay. All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, vote. A second.
Oh, sorry.
No, I was going to, I thought it was a question. Okay. All right, so now we're gonna have the public hearing about the city manager search process. And, um,
Does, do we, do we have another public hearing?
It's on here.
Well, Mayor Walker, I was, talk, people in the public that have left, that wanted to speak to this. And so, that might be something, if we could possibly have a, a public hearing on this topic, another, at another meeting.
I'd like to formally request we table it.
Yes.
Or continue it to the next meeting.
I second that. So I guess that's a, we've amended the agenda, so, right, we get to vote on it? The motion was to table the city manager search process public hearing until our next meeting.
There's still an open comment period at the end of the meeting, if anybody wants to share any comments.
But, I mean, I guess the other thing is.
Are you here to speak on the?
Oh, okay.
All right.
So we're, we're, we're just gonna rescind that. But I guess we still can have another public hearing.
Yes, and then we should put it back.
Yeah, we'll have another public hearing.
Hopefully, we were planning to have it more than once, anyway. Yeah. All right, so.
So are we having it tonight?
Yes, we're having it right now.
Because people have waited.
Okay, you wanna come on up?
My name is Barbara Meyer, I live at sixteen forty-two Meridian Street. Uh, and yes, um, so many people have already said many of the things that I came here to say this evening. First and foremost, I support you. There are three people I am very unhappy with on council and one mildly unhappy. The issue of white fragility is not to be shrugged off. You seriously have to look at that. That was an excellent presentation. It takes work, it takes constant vigilance. This city manager, if we want to change this city, we have to go out and look for someone who actively will be jumping up onto the arc of history and helping to bend it towards justice. That has got to be absolutely at the forefront and mind. Choosing a city manager, which will have an impact on this city for quite a number of years. I've been here a quarter of a decade and I think there have been only two in that time. A quarter of a century, twenty-five years. It's a, it's a decision that lasts forward a long time and it has ramifications, and even if it's just an interim one. And the letter that was written by that interim one, we saw from his, he was more interested in the rule of law than in making sure the law was the correct law. We have to sweep away this dedication to, this is the way it is and these are the Roberts rules and this is whatever, because that gets in the way of making any actual progress. You're not gonna get where you're gonna be. And none of us are gonna get there unless we all make a concerted effort to say, yes, this is priority one. City manager's gonna impact absolutely everything. We were talking, ah, fifty million dollar bond, you won, right? Two years ago, I came because the city council budget seemed a bit large. I did my math, the nineteen ninety-six budget, adjusting for inflation, tw- forty-eight percent, to the two thousand and sixteen budget, you were spending sixty million dollars more in that year, after adjusting for inflation from the nineteen ninety-six. If you think that a city manager choosing to put money here versus money there doesn't impact our forward movement towards justice, you're insane. We had fifty million dollars two years ago. Could've written a check, except we allowed the spending to just incrementally change and not really benefit the city the way it needed to. This is the most important thing you will do. Even an interim one, and particularly at this juncture in our city life with, you know, next weekend coming up. The person who is gonna walk us through that is important. And to bring in anyone from the outside would be to radically change the way we walk. And certainly, the words in that letter from the candidate who then walked back out, however they came in and out the door, I don't care. This, the mayor was right to alert us to what went on in that room. That letter from the candidate told us very clearly that that candidate was in no way the one who should have been chosen. That it did not reflect what we really need to focus on in this city if we're actually going to get to a place where we should have gotten decades ago. I'm tired of waiting for it, people who suffer a lot more than I do under it, are tired of waiting for it. You have to make a conscious choice, that that's the most important thing. And then it informs how you decide about development. Because now you're thinking in terms of, does this end us, bend us towards justice? Does this make our housing situation better? Every decision has got to hinge on that. And most certainly, the one that will have the biggest impact on the most people in this community and that is the choice of the next city manager. Thank you.
She, she was the first one on the list.
Oh, which, oh, so.
So I didn't, I just forgot. It is open. It is open for the public. I did not know, I forgot the list initially, but she happened to be the first one, so I'm still in order. So let's see. Is Robin still, Robin's gone. So it looks like, um, Dawn Gathers is next. All right, Louis Schultz.
Are, are there gonna be a second public hearing? I didn't quite follow that.
Yes, at another time.
No, I'll, I'll hold off, I'll just let everybody go home a little bit.
Okay. All right. And Marissa, you go, okay, now we're open.
Well, I don't know, I'm gonna say it probably the next time too. But, uh, you know, since everybody in the hot seat tonight, are you doing this job because you really wanna make change? Or what special perks did you request? I guess is what I wanna know at this point. Like, did you just do it because you were assistant city manager and everything fell through with the first guy? I mean, I guess it was a whole redacted section, which means that it's obviously, obviously something that's not being told in the story too, right? But I do feel like that it had to be some type of benefit, otherwise.
Well, that's our next discussion.
Oh, you gonna get to the redacted stuff?
We are gonna get to the conversation.
Is the redacted stuff in it?
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak for the public hearing about the city manager search process?
Good evening, my name is Brandon Collins, I'm a lifelong, uh, resident of Charlottesville. I have three children who are also lifelong residents of the city of Charlottesville. Uh, among the many things I could've said earlier, I might say them later, who knows? I know you guys are cautious when you invite me up to speak. Um, but on this issue, um, I think you can expand on a process uh, in a massive way that the community would really appreciate. Charlottesville is at, uh, a really intense point in time. The opportunity for transformation, uh, is amazing. And I hope we can embrace that. And I know it gets ugly and it gets painful. Mayor Walker, I think you've done an exceptionally amazing job with helping us work towards transformation and we're really just at the tip of it, right? Uh, choosing a city manager and how that city manager is going to engage with the council, be accountable to the council, but also accountable to the public, is a really big deal. And I think if we can include the public kind of in two phases. One is the crafting of a job description. Now, I know y'all want that power, but I think, uh, Charlottesville's ready to move forward a little bit and have the public involved, uh, in crafting, literally crafting that job description, uh, with y'all. Uh, and I think that, that's something we should ex- uh, expect from you. Uh, and then the rest is, is giving up some power. Yeah, they gotta work for you, you're, you know, you're hiring them and they have to do the job you need them to do. Uh, but they are working for the people and so relinquishing some of your power in that decision-making, I think, uh, would be huge. And I think the, I think, uh, the residents of Charlottesville would appreciate that. We had a smaller, slimmed down version of that, uh, with the RHA selecting a director and the board was very open to the participation of residents of public housing in making that decision. And as a result, they all kinda owned it, as did the board. And it was, it was a good process. I could see something like that on a much bigger scale as being something that could be good for this community. And we really need something good. I mean, that's, that's just the bottom line, this is just a mess. And I appreciate the transparency so we can see the mess, right? We all had suspicions. Um, so that's good to have this transparency and see some of this mess. But, um, now the mess is out there, let's, let's get, let's get to work as a community, you know, making things better. And, uh, see y'all on Sunday, I hope.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Tony Wash, Brookwood Drive. I don't know where you're gonna speak, I just have a question. And maybe the acting attorney might be able to answer it. Any good candidate for the city manager job, just like any sports player, is gonna want an extended contract. They aren't gonna want to move their family here for a one-year contract, they wanna two or three-year contract. And if the city, the way Dr. Bellamy is hoping, uh, can move forward from a city manager government to a strong mayor government, if the city does that, while there's still time left on the contract that that city manager has, what happens?
So you can stay up. To be clear, uh, what I was requesting was that we explore the option.
Oh, I understand.
Of strong, yeah, but, but in the last meeting, when we actually had this discussion about strong mayor, what it appeared that we were talking about, per Ms. Lisa Robertson and the rest of our council, was that we were moving towards elected mayor and we would still have the city manager. Elected mayor doesn't mean that the individual will be a strong mayor. So you still could have a city manager and an elected mayor.
Yeah, but if this, if the city manager is hired under the terms of the city manager government, which is now, and then we end up two years down the road or three years down the road, while he still has time or she still has time left on her contract, what, who governs the city then?
But you're not saying, down the road and what?
Down the road, if we, if you're able to get an elected mayor on the ballot, the position for elected mayor, and it was voted on and we end up with elected mayor, but the city manager government is still intact for the length of the contract.
What I'm saying is that you can have the elected mayor and the city manager position. The elected mayor would still be a weak mayor, it's just elected by the city. Just because it's elected doesn't automatically make it strong.
It won't be a strong executive.
You're not talking the same thing as Richmond then?
No.
But there have been, you're not confused that there have been.
So we've referred to Richmond, we've had those discussions, but in the last meeting, we said.
Okay, is there anyone else that wish, would like to speak on the public hearing? All right, so I'm gonna close the public hearing now and we have committed to, um, having this on, uh, um, future a- agenda. So next, we have, um, ratifying employment contract of, um, Mike Murphy. So next we have, um, ratifying employment contract of, um, Mike Murphy for interim city manager.
So you have before you a contract, um, that requires adoption by city council. Um, you had a closed session, um, and then moved into an open session um, where the decision was announced and the contract was signed, but it still requires ratification through a resolution. Um, I'm sure that the council is gonna want to have discussion about, um, the redacted section. So I'll go ahead and address the issue briefly. The, um, FOIA Advisory Council has consistently, um, made it clear that retirement benefits are exempt from, from FOIA. Previously, for most of the positions in the city, um, with the exception of the city manager, we have, um, had a lot of conversations between department heads, but never a contract. I'm of the strong opinion that any department head that has any sort of deviation from, um, the exact, um, benefits articulated in our personnel policy should be subject to a contract pursuant to, to that opinion and that advice. Um, when we hired the police chief, we did a contract, um, as, um, as we hired the new, um, city attorney who will, um, start very soon, and, um, I won't have to be here anymore, as much as this was fun tonight. Um, uh, that, they have a contract and every single one of those contracts, the way it's structured, retirement benefits are exempt from discussion. Um, it is the employees, um, written, um, through a written consent to waive that personnel record confidentiality. Um, the city, the city does not, um, assume, um, or release, um, personnel information with the exception of what is expressly, um, required to be released under FOIA. We have maintained that policy, um, for the twenty years that I have, um, been involved in city government. And, um, while I appreciate that it is, um, it is different to now sort of look at these contracts that are being written, um, I would encourage the, um, the community to consider that, that actually now we will have contracts that people can read. Um, I do think that, um, there are good reasons to not waive, um, the personnel records exception within our city. Um, and I do think that, maybe in the sense, I'll just say individually that, um, I don't, I don't think that it is public information to know if I'm on this health insurance plan or that health insurance plan, or if I elected one pension plan versus a different pension plan. And so ultimately, I think it's the individual employee's decision whether to, to waive disclosure of their personnel records. I will continue, um, to the extent that I am handling those issues to exempt personnel records um, every time there's a FOIA request or another request made. And I've had discussions with the FOIA Advisory Council and read the opinions on that. So, um, you know, ultimately, um, city council are our leaders and they will, just, they will set our policy and they will decide whether to waive the personnel exemption. We've never done it for any other employee. There's a lot of things in a personnel record, um, that I think rightfully people don't, they want to exert that exemption. So, um, I don't know that even I can say what the potential consequences are across the board for starting a process or a practice of waiving the personnel exemption. But that is ultimately up to, um, city council to decide. So, um, I would continue to advise council that, um, in the entrance of, um, having the public understand that our department heads should have contracts. But on every single one of those contracts, unless that individual waves or city council directs, um, there'll be a retirement benefit section that's exempt from FOIA. So, thanks.
So, just a point of clarification, what's before us now is to vote on the resolution to ratify the contract, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's what the action that's required.
As the action is required.
But I imagine there's a discussion about the contract that they may want to.
That mean, can we discuss without making a motion?
Has to be a first and a second before the motion.
So I will, I've moved to adopt the resolution approving the interim city manager's employment agreement.
Second.
So I, I, as I made the motion, I guess I have the right to say a few comments first. But, um, I think, um, we've discussed this at length with Mr. Murphy, uh, and, um, he's assuming an awful lot of responsibility for the city, an awful lot of risk for the city. And then in, in our own basis, um, it is very challenging to find people who will pick up, move here for just a four to six month stint. And Mr. Murphy has been willing to step in and, and take over the job that he's been working on very diligently um, for these several months, working with, um, our police chief and our fire chief, uh, on our security plan. So I, I, that's why I'm endorsing this contract.
Is there anyone else?
Yeah, I want to thank, thank Mr. Murphy for his service, for, for being willing to do this, for bringing a ton of experience and qualifications, for having a very strong platform as being the head of a, of the, of the eight, twelve operation so far. And there was a lot of very unnecessary and really challenging brinksmanship that brought us kind of to the eleventh hour with this. And we voted on this the day that we were gonna not have a city manager that night. So we were not gonna have a statutory position if this had all fallen apart. And I regret what that put you and the other internal candidate through. And, uh, I, I'm glad that we have you, and I think you're valuable, and I am glad that you're willing to do this. So I support this.
Now, um, I also support, um, approving this. And, um, clearly, as everyone has seen in full display, um, we're not exactly ruling out the red carpet for someone to take on this role. And, um, I just really appreciate your leadership and willingness, um, in this environment to, to step in and, um, and work with us. And I'm, I'm looking forward to that partnership in the, in the months ahead.
I think is, one other thing is important to note, um, and it's in the, the document, the background information for those who have the agenda, those who are watching at home. There's been some discussion tonight from members of the public asking, why did we have a three O vote on, uh, was it Monday or Tuesday? I can't, whichever day it was. Yeah, the thirty first. So because of the vote that we took, there, we had two of our counselors who weren't able to make the meeting. They were both out of town, Mayor Walker and Ms. Hill. You can't have that vote, like, everyone has to be in person in order for us to have that vote, and it had to be in public. So people, some have asked, well, why did we have the vote with two counselors not there? And it was essentially, as, uh, Mr. Signer just alluded to, if we did not take the vote, we literally would not have had a city manager. Which means that there were not just situations in regards to August twelfth, or decisions in regards to August twelfth that had to take place, but also other administrative functions. So that's why the three of us who were in town, we took the vote so that the city would have a city manager. Because the last thing that I believe that any of us would want is for us to have a date, like July thirty first or August first for that matter, with the city, with no city manager. And there's been some discussion about, well, we had already talked about a succession plan and different people could be appointed. But to my knowledge, or as it was explained to me, that that succession plan is contingent upon people accepting those positions. And if those individuals choose not to accept those positions, as we had some people say, that they would not take on the role of interim city manager, we needed to move forward. Furthermore, it says, there are several important decisions regard, surrounding the upcoming anniversary under state and local law which require city manager. The city code establishes that the city manager is a director of public safety. City code section two dash one four six states, the city manager shall be the chief executive and administrative officer of the city government, and so on and so forth. So without a city manager, we are really a city that's not being ran by anyone. So we had to name him last week. So I just wanted to clear that up. Um, and if anyone has questions about that particular piece, we can talk more about it. But that's where I am. Uh, oh, go ahead.
So we spent most of last week, I was out of town at a national league of cities conference, and, um, we spent most of last week back and forth about, um, my concerns about the contract. So Allison, from my understanding, okay, it is the prac, it has been the practice of the city to exempt, um, that section, but it does not have to be exempt.
It's, it's within, um, the council's discretion to waive that exemption. And with all FOIA's, um, exceptions, there's, you have discretion to waive the exception. And, you know, I, I think that it belongs to both the employee, the individual employee whose records are, are the personnel records, um, and to the organization.
So my request to council, I think that we could have had this discussion after the thirty first, um, when we were back in the same room. I asked council if we could get all, um, of the individuals who were key decision makers um, in the process, especially related to August tenth, eleven, and twelfth in the room, to see whether this was a conversation that we needed to have, um, a decision that we needed to have immediately, um, or not. We are apparently moving in the direction of having contracts, which I think is, um, the way things should, um, be done. We should have a written account, but of, um, what has been agreed upon. At the same time, I don't agree with the practice of, I don't agree with the requests. So let me just make sure that I say that, um, first, and everyone's aware of that. But I also think that when, when we are talking about, um, transparency, that we need to make sure that we are transparent. And that even if something, again, is a difficult conversation, or you're not sure what the reaction will be, that we have the conversation. And so, and I think it's important.
I would agree. I think we've had, I mean, I, I don't know if we, well, we can't really go into the specifics, but there was nearly a week of negotiations amongst counselors and personnel talking about what was acceptable, what wasn't acceptable. I think there was a, a hard line with Ms. Walker and myself in regards to what we would like to see. Um, and council was able, in my opinion, to be able to find some form of middle ground. Um, I'm not gonna say I'm completely one hundred percent, uh, like everything that, how it transpired, or even where we are right now. But I am happy and glad with the fact that we have an interim city manager and we're able to move forward with running the city specifically for not only August twelfth, but the other important business that takes place outside of what's going on this upcoming weekend.
So my, my, um, ask is, is, are, Mr. Murphy, are you open to having this discussion publicly?
Are you gonna ratify the contract? Is that what you're asking me? You ask.
I'm asking you, are you open to having, uh, public discussion about the section that has been redacted?
Sure. Would you like me to address that? Or are you planning on doing that? Well, um, I anticipated for some time that this would, uh, come up at the mayor's request. And, uh, so I'm gonna address that this evening. And, uh, I will say that I was, uh, offered the position on the Tuesday that we interviewed with the council on July twenty fourth. And I did not agree to accept the role until, uh, there would be a formal vote and the contract would be signed. And, um, for me, I'm only interested in two things really in my life, to take care of my family and to be of service in whatever job I do. And, um, I've enjoyed being of service to, uh, the community and being with the city. Uh, and this month, I'll be with the city for twenty-four years since I came here as an intern. And really, the day I came in for an interview, it was really to say to council, I wish you had called us in earlier, and that I have these thoughts about the organization. And I didn't really expect to be asked to be the city manager. And, but why I agreed when I was asked later that day, uh, is that the, uh, city had been good to me um, and I was willing to give back to the organization. At a time where I really believe leadership is needed, and that, uh, I believed I could provide it. I won't seek the job permanently, and I told the council so in the interview, for two reasons. I have, uh, family members, uh, who came here from another state, uh, to be able to age in our home, which is in Almaro County. And I don't believe that the city should ever change, uh, the code, which requires the city manager to live inside the city limits. And I'm not gonna move. And the other is this, that, uh, as I told the council, I come to the city manager's office from a somewhat unconventional route of being, uh, a counselor uh, and coming through human services, where most people come through public administration and budget and other routes. And I can tell you that even for the last three and a half years that I've spent as the assistant city manager, for me, who only came to the city to help people, it's about the maximum extent of being able to feel that help. And while I want to help the organization now, I don't want to be the city manager permanently. I think that, uh, people should recognize it's a difficult time for the staff in the city. It's a difficult time for me personally, uh, as the person who selected me, uh, has left. And, uh, new city manager will be hired. And while I feel entirely confident that I can provide value to that person and the organization, it is still an unknown. And I think that, uh, there are discussions of the form of government right now where the job I hold doesn't really exist, if you go whole hog with that. And I think that, uh, it would be silly for me to have not contemplated, um, what the ramifications are of that. I will say that, uh, my contract request was that, um, I want to be able to retire from the city. I am uniquely situated out of all the employees in the city. I am literally the only person who serves at will of the city manager, uh, and has the number of years where I could retire, but I'm not old enough to do that. And so, uh, what I asked is that, um, you know, there are people in public safety uh, who are able to retire when they are fifty years old, instead of me waiting till fifty-five. And so I requested that I be eligible to retire at fifty, only under the circumstances that I was leaving, uh, not by my choice. And, uh, in fact, uh, the contract, uh, waives my right to get early retirement if I leave by my choice. So if I decided that it's wonderful to go work somewhere else, that's on me to not collect the retirement. And that's what's missing in the. And that's what's missing in the redacted version. I'm not asking for a supplement, as was granted a previous city manager, because I think that the law enforcement officers earn that, and I don't serve on the street in the danger that they do, so I didn't ask for it. My pension was capped three and a half years ago, because actually, every time a lead team member, a department head joins the team, they're given the opportunity to change their retirement plan. And I'm changing my job now, and I'm asking for that change in plan. So um, uh, my interest is in the stability uh, for my family and to serve the city. And that's why I asked for what I asked for. I think that um, the impact of taking the job now, at this time, for this city, um, it would be foolish to not realize it could have a lasting impact on any person's career who comes in to do it. And I believe that what I asked for, uh, provided me some comfort in that regard. I will point out that uh, you know, the original offer for the council uh, did offer more money, uh, considerably more money. And um, it's entirely possible that I could have had the votes for that contract. But when I was under the impression um, that it would make a difference for the council, I waived the entire raise, and that's what you saw in the media today, that my pay would continue to be the same. The mayor and I fundamentally disagree about what that impact could be on my career and whether I should get a benefit that outlives the time where I'm the interim. And I just wanna be clear that um, I totally understand her opinion, and I felt like she heard mine. And we had nothing but respectful discussions about the contract. And I'm entirely confident that we'll work together well, moving forward, um, if I serve in the role, um, because I really believe that her goals for the organization and the community are very similar to mine. So that's what's missing.
All right, is there any?
I know, since you put it out.
But that needed to be.
That was the, yeah, that was. So, Ms. Davies, one question I have is, because we've had this discussion um, specifically in regards to benefits, uh, does that mean that the rest of personnel, staff personnel and their benefi- benefits can now be discussed publicly?
I will continue to make the argument that personnel records um, that do not include salary and position and classification are exempt from FOIA pursuant to both the FOIA advisory committee and um, and the, and the law. I think that um, it should be noted that Mr. Murphy took another one for the organization, because he waived his individual confidentiality, and that is a fundamentally different situation than um, you as a city organization, um, waiving your confidentiality. So um, so that would be a um, a very important distinguishing um, factor in any analysis.
And so, and, and I'll say about this en- entire process, and I um, again, in each, each time that um, I have discussed honestly my concerns with um, Mr. Murphy, I'm upfront, you know, I shared with him what, what my thoughts were um, a- about the ask, um, and I did a lot of um, work in terms of even talking to um, Mr. Jones about what his um, period as um, interim um, looked like, and whether there was a contract and, or employment agreement, or anything, because he was the, the last one. I will say, not, taking this conversation away from um, Mr. Murphy's request, the reason we spent so much time over the past week having the discussion, because we ended up in an, another situation, in my opinion, where council was unwilling um, to have um, full discussion. Or hold off and not, I, I kept making the comment about not making decisions out of fear and frustration. So the, the, I did not agree with the request, but I also, more importantly than that, when we talk about how we make decisions and what um, we find important, the, how council reacted to this process again, um, was the, the major, was one of the major challenges. The city attorney's office, that was one of the major challenges. And again, I would ask that you all look at the process, um, not saying you have to agree with me one hundred percent, fifty percent, twenty-five, you don't have to agree with me at all, but just look at um, at the process and how unwilling you all were to um, have the con- conversation. Or at least that's what I felt was happening.
Mayor Walker, may I say, I, my motivation was the fact that at five o'clock on July thirty-one, and Mr. Jones walked out of his office, we were not gonna have a city manager with the ability to issue the orders that our police chief and our fire chief have repeatedly told us that we needed to have that, that authority. And so that wasn't, it wa- it, that was my motivation.
But we also had time.
I, I don't think we had time.
No, there were, and this is the thing, that whole, there's only, you know, um, t- two options, which is, you know, a very dangerous way of thinking. We, there are more options, but did we work towards um, those options? And I will say, um, Counselor Hill, Hill Bellamy and um, Galvin were at least, you know, open to um, the, the emails that I was sending. Um, I talked to Counselor um, Galvin, uh, you know, a couple of times, um, throughout the process. It, but, there was a lot that was happening that I thought that we needed to be in the same room. One of the requests I made is to have the chief of police and the fire chief in the room, so we would know exactly what we were dealing with, and whether we could wait a day and have this discussion when all of us was back together, um, the next day, with input from them on whether waiting a day was um, could be as detrimental as, as we were being told. And quite frankly, the last two um, processes that we've been through with um, the first candidate and now, it, it's really just hard to, hard to trust the process.
Could it be that we need to build more time into it? That way, we would, we would be able to, to make sure that we, you know, uncover all the stones. And we, and that's why, hopefully, maybe at the next meeting after the public hearing, we can actually put on paper what that process is, and that we all agree to it, and we will follow it, and, and that way, we won't, we would really commit to not um, uh, breaking our trust. I mean, I, I'm, I believe that we can build in the time to do that. I hope we can.
I just think y'all.
I'm, 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 uh, I'm trying to understand though, where, where was the, the perspective in regards to that we have more time? Cause I was told that we don't have more time. And I know you and I have spoken about this, I mean.
You talking to me?
Yeah, but, no, yeah, and I'm talking to you. When you said that you believe we have more time, like I was clearly told that day that we did not have.
No, I mean, if you're talking about, from my understanding, and I don't know everything, what I was told, that if we have a succession plan, that somebody on that list could have been in place um, for a day or two, until we were together to make this decision. I don't know what you, what was signed, or what information, again, I wasn't here and a part of that process, but um, perception of the community and whether we had someone in place the moment um, that um, Mr. Jones left versus whe- whether that decision had to be made um, before, bef- before he left, and who had to make it, that is the information that um, you know, seemed, seems to be mixed, and I think the information that was received, unless Allison, are you?
So I'm not, I'm not sure that I, I know exactly.
So he- here's what I was told, here, here's how it was explained to me, that we agreed on the succession plan um, a couple of weeks ago. We, our, our order is the city manager, assistant city manager, assistant city manager, um, fire chief, police chief. In the event that we don't have a city manager, it will move to um, our assistant city manager, Ms. Bogart. Or can we?
That was for specific things, I didn't think it was for the overarching, like, job. That was for a specific emergency response, I thought.
Right.
But I was told that was on par.
If Mr. Jones was not here to make a decision.
Right.
Um, that these were the individuals.
These are the people. It's, it's essentially on par, correct? So Ms., Ms., uh, are we allowed to say names? A little too late now? Can we say the names?
Well, that was public.
Alright, that's public. Alright, so yeah, so Ms. Bogart, Ms. Bog- Ms. Bogart said that she would not like to be the interim, correct? We were already in discussions with Mr. Murphy. On the co- based on the conversations that I was told, that then it would go to Chief Baxter, and then um, Chief Ratney. But there's, there's a, a limited amount of power that they would have as acting opposed to interim, and the acting city manager would be limited specifically to a certain amount of things, but in order for us to be able to carry out city functions, we needed the interim title, which is what we had to have with Mr. Murphy, which meant that at five o'clock on the thirty-first, we had to have a interim city manager, not an acting, because there's other business outside of just the public safety realm. That's how it was explained to me. The assistant city manager, one of them already had declined the position. We were in discussions with another assistant city manager. If he would have chosen to decline that position, then the acting title would have went to the chief of fi- uh, the fire chief, or the chief, then if they said no, then the chief of police. But they are in acting capacity, not a interim capacity. Those two titles have distinctions, can you, I'm trying to explain it. I'm trying to explain it. Those two distinctions in ti- okay, well, you know. So you know, but you, but you know more, I'm trying to explain it to you, but you, you talking.
So I, I think that, I think the concern is, and I didn't, I mean, I'm trying to read this, I didn't actually draft any of this, but it looks, it looks like the succession plan was to assistant city manager Leslie Baragad, assistant city manager Mike Murphy, and then um, it was only a limited designation past that to the fire chief, or the chief of bele- police for um, emergency management issues? And I think that, I think that the general, um, the general issue is that we have, we have the city code that's set up with um, with very specific duties that go to the city manager. So whether you establish him as an interim city manager, or as the full-time city manager, it, it is certainly, hopefully, nothing would happen over the course of a couple of days, um, but it is concerning to have no one in that statutory position for a um, for a period of time, and we'd already.
Their duties are only for the city manager title.
Well, so I, I guess I'm, I'm worried that I'm, I'm understanding what you mean by that. What, what I mean by that is that, yes, there's a statutory provision that talks expressly about the city manager needing to be in appointed position from city council with, and the duties of emerg- of all of the duties of the city fall under his statutory duties, and so this, the succession plan was really for basic operational, like signing contracts and doing, like, the, not the statutory authority that a city manager has. So um.
One day, she said a couple more days, a little bit more time.
Well, I, but I, I think.
I was sitting there arguing over a couple days.
I, I think that, I think there's a legitimate concern about operate, about the city not having a s- someone in the city manager position. And um, and that was certainly an, an urgent feeling for the counselors that were there.
So I think, so, for me, my, my comment to that is that if it were the will of the people who were in um, a part of this discussion, we could have waited a day or two, that it, it was possible, and you all were not open to that. There is nothing that I have, and I have reached outside um, of this body on even, you know, discussing whether it is actual law, or just the general practice of how we do business, whether that section can be redacted. And um, I think we, again, need to look at whether it's um, was absolutely no way around it, which is what I'm, I keep saying, and said through tons of emails and phone calls, or um, whether it, that it wasn't even considered, and um, that we could possibly wait until we were all together and had all the same information and made the decision.
It was.
We would have not even been all together, because Council Signer was gone then too, so it's like, we had to.
A, a major thing that was happening, and we, there's been a lot of good community input about us getting trust and working together, was that the churn and the stress on us working together lost one candidate. She, she took herself out of the process, cause she was unwilling to put up with the adversity of it, and that's why she, after three or four days, she said, I can't do it.
So Mike, again, I would like for you to have a conversation, before you keep talking about um, what Leslie said or did not say.
I just know that I heard that she was not interested anymore.
Okay, but I think you should talk to her.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
But I know that she was not interested.
But I think you should just.
Okay.
And then you can present us with facts.
I promise, I'll do that. But I know that for us, for the four other colleagues, that there just was not the appetite for, for, I mean, each hour, people weren't sleeping, and each hour was very stressful, figuring out what we're gonna do, and we were right up against that, and people said there was ten minutes, there was ten minutes because of our schedules to actually get three people. Wes had a internship program run, I had a friend get in a car accident, had to be, leave the town for, you know, Heather was, I mean, it was, it was just, it was really hard to make this work, and, and when you're saying there was this scenario, well, but we were committed to not, we were committed to getting it done. We were committed to. Our options had narrowed due to a lot of unnecessary brinksmanship, was, is my, is my position. And so.
But what issues or orders had to be given over the course of a day or two days, that couldn't wait while we have.
Forty-eight hours.
While we have people that are in place to do the job, until the full council can be able to take care of it.
It was my, it was my understanding, also besides the timeline, is that we, I mean, Wes went back to Mr. Murphy that morning, and there were some concessions made, and that was the end, so that was the bottom of all he was gon- what he was willing to give, and this is what his ask was, and that's what we had to present ourselves with. This is the ask of Mr. Murphy. Do we accept it, or we, do we not? And enough counselors accepted it, because there really wasn't, that wasn't gonna change. And we really, I mean, I was feeling pressure, I, I heard from the, the fire chief, I, I feel like there was definitely an interest in us having this continuity of leadership, and there was support among council, given the concessions that he made on his salary to do that.
Hold on, wait a minute.
Does the city management, city manager's office and the city government just cease to, to operate, or does someone else, is it, the expectation is that someone else in that office step up and take on those duties?
We're running out of options, so Mayor, Mayor, Mayor.
No, I'm saying, in, in reality, if something were to happen to Mike Murphy, is there no one in the office that, that the expectation would be, okay, he's no longer in the job, these are your responsibilities for now, until we can get someone else in that position?
Mayor Walker, may I say something?
It doesn't work, it doesn't work that way.
It's just a matter of getting the, getting the work done.
No, it, it, it's not.
City council would appoint somebody else. That's how it would happen.
We would have to appoint someone else.
Yeah, so, so, so city council would, would appoint someone else. If Mi- if Mike Murphy um, is hit by a car when he walks out of city hall tonight and is unable to perform his duties, city council will need to have another meeting and appoint someone else. They'll need to find someone who's willing to do it.
Right, and they're, they're gonna probably be asking for some protections. I mean, it's just the bottom line, it's the environment that we're in.
Hold on, it was clear, so I've been hearing this whole piece about people saying, could it? Hold on, it was clear, so I've been hearing this whole piece about people saying, could it wait two days? Now, Mr. Murphy, as well as others, I would love to, because what, how it was explained to me specifically was that there were poignant decisions that really needed to be made a week prior that we were essentially behind on. And that if we didn't make those decisions, we were gonna further be behind the ball in regards to August twelfth. So the time was of the essence and we couldn't wait another twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours. That's what specifically was what said to me, am I incorrect in what I was heard or my characterization of that?
I I I think that there's a, was a legitimate concern about when a declar- when and if a
Declaration of Emergency.
Declaration of Emergency would need to be declared and only the city manager could do it. And um and so now we have it before council tonight to discuss, so um.
So you could wait?
Well, I I don't know, I don't know, because now hindsight's twenty twenty, right? I mean, we were like if something, if something had happened and we needed to make a declaration of emergency during this period of time between now and then, we wouldn't have had a city manager.
That's not an option. If you're, you're sitting in the job of assistant city manager, then this is what the expectation is should something happen to the city manager. And and maybe that's what we need to look at, so that, okay, you don't have the option to to decline the job. This is what the expectation is moving forward, you're doing this job unless and until something happens where there is an appointment.
No, 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 I think.
But I'm saying, you don't give the assistant that option, this is, and that's what.
You can't make someone do a job.
If you were in a contract, most definitely.
No, you, no, you can't make, so if someone in terms of.
Can I ask Mr. Murphy a question?
If the president succeeds the president, put something.
Hold on, um, wait, please. Hold on.
We haven't, we got in writing from ACM that they.
Counselor Bellamy, Counselor Bellamy? And I think we, excuse me, I think we keep making comments about that if we are going to talk about our other ACM, that she should at least be in the room to be able to answer questions for herself. So since she's not, I think that we should not keep bringing that conversation um up because it's still, you know, we we're at the point where we're not talking about um for most of us, conversations that we've had directly w- with her. Um and I I just don't think, don't think that that's fair.
And I just.
Mayor Walker, may I just ask Mr. Murphy some questions? Mr. Murphy, what, there were, there were several orders and s- and that that you had to sign on on August one, as I recall. Do you mind sharing some of those with us to give us a flavor of what, because we were definitely, a sense of urgency was conveyed to us by by staff, that this was a really important decision to resolve. And that that they, we needed to have these resolved by August one, when was the first day without Mr. Jones?
You're you're aware that we made public on August first, the hiring of the city attorney and on August second, a number of announcements about public safety, street closures, et cetera, that are only in the purview of the city manager. The ordinance that council or the resolution that was previously passed is really to establish the director of emergency management, right? So uh i- it's not the same power and authorities. And there is still the matter, which does come before you tonight, but was uh certainly something that could have happened anytime during the past week, which is the declaration of a local emergency or at least the authorization of such by the council um in order to access resources that are required for August ten, eleven, and twelve, so um tha- that remains true.
So I'll say that um Counselor Bellamy, the conversation I had with you, that was not um, it doesn't sound like that those were anything that, again, and this is just the last time I'm gonna say it, that couldn't have waited.
If they specific, wait, what couldn't have waited?
Based, what he just said has happened between then and now.
We're not, we're not, I mean, some of the things I know we can't talk about in regards to like the hire, but I know there's, I know specifically what was said to me in regards to anticipation of what they thought was gonna happen, not only locally but from a statewide, was that we had to move forward with the city manager now. You can't vote on the phone. And we didn't legally meet on the phone, when? That vote did not take place on the phone?
May I call the question, okay.
Didn't happen on the phone, what did you tell? There was nothing that was voted on on the phone call. Alright, you got it, you got it then, because you know more than I know, because you're in this position.
So my um next question, um, hold on, excuse me. I'm still talking.
Interruptions, we can call a question.
Okay.
I did just call a question, so.
Um Allison, is ratifying this contract the only option?
You need to officially adopt the contract in a public session under Virginia law, so um so I think that the council needs to decide whether they want to adopt this contract um or not. And then I think that it's an open question whether, you know, you have a city manager, because I think that, you know, I I I think that's just the decision you guys need to make.
So it was signed. We's, so we've moved, we've made a motion on the resolution, it's been seconded, I, the question's been called.
Yes. I'll question.
Ho- but we're still in, but I'd like to request before we call the question, further discussion, five minutes of further discussion. So, because I have a clarifying question for Ms. Davies.
Okay.
Uh based on what you just said in regards to ratifying the contract, um and Ms. Mayor Walker asks, is that the only option? You're saying that if we don't ratify the contract, we won't have a city manager?
Well, so you have a contract that hasn't been officially adopted in a public session by resolution of the council.
Mm-hmm.
So you do have this contract that you signed, it might, um if you don't adopt it um as a whole council body, um there's gonna be arguments on both sides about whether it's a valid contract. So if you don't, um if it hasn't been officially adopted, then what you have is a contract that isn't an official um approved um agreement by the governing body. And if um, I'm not gonna certainly speak for Mr. Murphy, but um if he was very clear about what his expectations were for stepping into that role and you are unwilling to ratify and adopt the contract, then I think you guys are probably back in discussions about about whether um, about what you're gonna do about the city manager position, right? I mean, yeah, I mean, it's just.
So Mayor Walker, one more question, Mayor Walker, you had a question? You were saying something before you.
Right at this moment.
Okay. Alright, cool.
Are we ready to vote?
Are we ready to vote? So do we vote?
So who calls?
Oh, I need to call that. Okay, so before we vote, I am going to say that um I think that we should have further discussion about there. There are two parts of this contract, um and especially with the conversations that were had so uh last year surrounding the um the hit that Mr. Jones took um to not even having his contract, the the conversation around his contract being extended um for even a year post um the events of of last August. I I am again saying to you all that you all really need to look at how you make decisions um and and what what those decisions um look like. The permanency of this request, as I've shared with all of you, um is is very alarming to me. And again, I will say this, that the um support for Mr. Murphy, I was one of those people and I've had this discussion with you, one of three. And I've shared that because the conversations surrounding me asking questions about this um led to conversations that I wasn't supportive at all and that was just not true. Um and we had discussions, and I just had these discussions with um about this city attorney position, where there were full negotiations about um what their contract would look like. And during those discussions, which I led, I talked to every counselor every time an issue was brought up from um both the um city attorney that's already on staff and the city attorney that's coming, coming on. I also talked to Mr. Jones at every um, every turn for that. And I talked to human resources when I did not understand something. And for me, the comments that I've brought up, the concerns that that I've brought up about this contract, and not just, and I and I want to make this clear, that from my understanding of what you all are voting on is the fact that we're talking about um not just five years. And I think, first, even before I say that, I wanna say that we're talking about a hypothetical. At no point has anyone said um that either of our assistant city managers would not be with the city, right? So even when these conversations were brought up to us, as if people, someone would come on and they would be um immediately dismissed, that um, you know, was not how the conversation was going. That was some, I'm gonna not, not say what I was just about to say, but that was not how the conversation was going. So I think again, when when we, when we look at at process um and to be clear about what process and what transparency looks like, so.
How much more time would you like?
Time with what?
You're saying, are you requesting more, why are you, relax, like, relax. No, no, not you, I'm talking to Heather, but how much more time, you're saying you want more time to be able to discuss?
I understand, we haven't been in a room, and this, we've discussed this through emails, I've discussed it um on the phone, the request that I had about having um Chief Baxter and Brackney in the room when we were getting our information, how this process um occurred, and I have several thoughts um about that I'm not, I'm not gonna say here, but it's a process again that we did not do um in a way that was um equitable and just, in my opinion. And again, people have a right to, you know, disagree with me, but I mean, I think full understanding of what um the request was, um has been and what has happened in the past is when you're talking about moving forward and making better decisions moving forward, we have to um be willing to have those conversations.
I understand that, so what I'm asking is, when would you like to, you're saying that you wouldn't be comfortable with us moving forward until we all collectively have the conversation, correct?
But are we having that conversation? But we're having that conversation.
No, no, hold on, I'm asking, like, you're saying like in a close, like, we have another meeting, we're all five of us, and then that's when you would be comfortable moving forward with this?
But I think, so have, it doesn't appear that you all are open to that as an authority.
I'm open, I'm open.
Well, in part, I don't know what the difference would be because you've stated that there's, that you don't have any concern about putting material out from closed session into the public. So so.
Oh, it's a lot I'm leaving out.
But but so why don't, but this is, so so my assumption is that if we were to have a closed session, talking further about this, then you would feel very comfortable to put out anything from that in the public if you if you were concerned.
So my many closed sessions have we had, tell me.
But this is public.
Tell me.
Why would we do another closed session if there's a cha- if there's likelihood that everything there would be public?
Okay, so this is.
Why, I mean, we're we're having a.
This is my concern.
For an hour.
Okay, thank you, and so I'll put it out there and then we can vote, I will call the vote. Um, we had a former interim city manager, um the last one was Mr. Jones, he did not have a contract. He got a bump in salary, which has been traditional for how this process works, Mike, you, okay, um. And the requests that we are getting for this particular contract is new. We have now all been in the same room to have that conversation. From my understanding of conversations with the HR director, this is what we are presented with. We're presented with the fact that Mr. Murphy could have retired at fifty-five through sixty-five. If he were um fired, which is the reason why this request is being put up, he would not be able to access his retirement benefits until age sixty-five, um which is not just a five-year um term. With the five-year request, since there is some time between turning fifty and now, if a new city, and this is all, again, I said if then, if a new city manager came on, Mr. Murphy would not be able to um, he would not be able basically to be fired unless it was an egregious act, that's the clause that you added to um, to the employment. And so if there was someone, um if a new city manager came in, which is my main issue here, if a new city manager came in there, we have all talked about change, we've all talked about not tying the new city manager's hand. I said repeatedly through the process with the former candidate, Zemp, um that him not being able to come in and make any major decisions in terms of um removing staff members and department heads from their position um is something that I was totally committed to until the next permanent city manager was um on board and I thought we all should have been committed to. If someone happened to came, come in during that transition period, um Mr. Murphy would be placed on what administratively? That essentially ties the hands of the next city manager. No one else in the city will be offered that level of protection and it's just not right. We're not talking about a bump in pay, we're not talking about increased severance, which are all things that we could have um discussed and I would have supported. The weekend events and the uncertainty of it, um what could potentially happen and how it could affect someone's career, I had that conversation with you, right? And I totally un- understood and would have supported any of those requests. But this request, what I just described to you, what I understood, I did not support and I still do not support it. Alright.
We've talked, we've talked about the value of these options, though, I know, as the council, that was provided to us. And this actually was less dollars total than some of the other options, from my understand.
No, so.
Motivating Mr. Murphy to leave, I mean, it's, it was, it's in his benefit to continue to work for the city.
So Heather, what I'll say to you is that after a conversation that Ms. Rice, um Allison Davies, Ms. Robertson, um and myself, we were in a discussion when we were just exploring what the options could be. Ms. um Lisa commented to us at the table was that instead of us having a process that we had just went through, that was a little messy, that she would put everything in writing for us to be able to discuss. At the point when it was time for negotiations, that did not happen. And so that was what I repeatedly brought up for us um as concern for me.
That was the sticking point that you and I both were talking about and then that was what, hold on, hold on one second, Ms. Galvin, but we've already been talking. Ms. Galvin, may I please?
I know, but I'm just confused what we did get, we did get information.
So when you, are you talking about the severance packages?
The severance.
And so when we were in that meeting, I threw out possibilities, right? So that we could have some options and have the information.
And that's when we got the different Excel spreadsheets about what the, what different variations of retirement would mean and what the cost would be. And I remember looking at that and just, I'm actually realizing that what's being asked for wasn't as expensive to the city.
But those weren't um his requests, that was just something that I put out there for us to, uh if we were talking about the same Excel spreadsheet in the same meeting that the four of us was in, so that we could have a starting point for our discussion. So I'm done with.
So is any, are you all opposed to us having um taken another day or so to have?
We haven't, I I I really think we need to.
But I mean, if her concern, which we, I mean, she's right, we are, our five of us haven't gotten in a room bound a closed session just to do it to button it all up.
We've been talking about this for an hour.
We've just had, I mean, we've had signs about transparency across the whole, this is a very transparent discussion.
In our city manager.
He's currently the city manager.
I I I favor moving, that that's that's why.
That's the, that's the commitment we've made to him, this was a signed document last week.
Uncommitment to him, all she's saying is that, why can't we just have another meeting so that we can all button it up to get on the same page?
We can have a motion about that, but we don't have to make every decision by consensus, we can make some decisions, three, four, we, we can call a vote, we've been here for a long, long time.
Understood, but us having one more, okay, well.
Let's have a motion, let, let's see if they're supporting that, we don't have to all agree on it.
All right, a motion to have another closed session about this, is there a motion like that?
Oh, I will, so moved. Is there a second? Okay, so I don't get a second, okay.
I would, I, I mean, I think the, the conversation around, I mean, I guess the question is, um.
No, it's fine, I didn't get a second, let's, let's just vote.
I would second it, but it, it isn't, it isn't the point.
This contract was, we, we signed it, we agreed to grant.
Signed, I mean, we've made a commitment.
We've made a commitment to Mr. Murphy, he needs to have some certainty, the police chief and the fire chief need certainty. I, I, I.
Anyone stepping in here would be asking for some protection, I just, I mean, that was certainly brought to us.
That's not what she is saying.
But again, if you're talking about negotiation, which we did not do.
He, he gave up his salary increase.
No, I'm, that happened the last day, I understand, and that was again, a conversation.
And that's when Dr. Bellamy got involved and signed on.
Okay, but what.
Because he committed to Mr. Murphy.
Her, her, that's not.
I'm just, I feel like we're going back on commitments that we're making to people, and I am not comfortable with that.
Okay, well, let's call the, let's call.
So which, which motion are we voting on, yours, Mr. Bellamy?
No, that, that didn't get.
That's fair.
There was no second.
I thought the mayor seconded it.
Okay.
Did she second?
Okay, so, let's call them.
All right, so vote.
So vote for the closed session?
Yes.
So now we're back to the original motion, which was to ratify Mr. Murphy's contract. So that was, that was moved and seconded, I made that motion.
Is there any further discussion?
So you sign this, and you're not gonna?
It's not about that, it's about literally asking for one more day for us all to get together, that's what y'all saying, no. I understand, there's a motion made a second, she asked me a question.
Comment from the attorney that this, that it either could, I mean, there are questions about how long the meeting was, whether there was enough pu- um, public notification, whether that, um, is clear about whether it was a emergency situation. I mean, there are all, and again, different factors surrounding how that decision was made and whether, um, you all made it in the best, um, mind frame. Okay, so.
So, revote, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
For me, it has nothing to do with Mr. Murphy, it's just, I don't get, why couldn't we take one more, for us to get together to address what she's saying? It's probably gonna have the same result, but it's just the, the common courtesy of our colleagues. But I understand where y'all are coming from, like, I'm not mad, it's just like.
You signed this contract.
I signed the contract, and what I'm saying is, just what Ms. Walker is saying, it's not going to kill us for the five of us right now to have a meeting.
Heather, but you all just made that legal with this vote.
Like.
It's done.
Yeah. Okay, okay. All right, so the report, um, the Emmett Streetscape Shared Use Plan Location, is this a, so council, is this something that, um, we can put on another?
No, they're here waiting, they are, they've been here waiting all night.
Okay.
Do you have a PowerPoint?
You all ready? All right, I'll go ahead and start. Uh, my name is Brennan Duncan, I'm the city traffic engineer. Um, I'm here tonight just to give you an update on, uh, the Emmett Street, uh, Smart Scale Project. Um, just a little bit of background, I know it's late, so we'll try and get through this quickly. Um, this is a, a grant-funded project that went, um, through the state. Smart Scale funding back in twenty fifteen, um, it encompasses the corridor from, of Emmett Street between Ivy all the way up to Arlington, um, it includes intersection improvements, it includes, uh, multi-use, uh, path, and bicycle improvements, transit improvements, um, trying to, to go get all of that. This was initiated by UVA Study, again, that one was done, I believe, in twenty thirteen. Um, we're to the point now, we're about eighteen months into coordination with UVA, and we have our consultant here. Um, we're probably six months into, um, engineering design, preliminary design. Um, we've had some steering committee meetings on it. Um, we're working towards our, um, preferred concept, hopefully in the next couple of months. Um, we're beginning to have an impasse with, uh, UVA as to the location of the multi-use path. Um, in the picture up there right now, you can see the, the old Excel Inn. Um, there's a site plan in right now for, um, a new Gallery Court Hotel that will be going in. Uh, UVA has a fifteen-acre parcel on the west side of Emmett Street, just south of the railroad trestle as well. Um, and they're, they're, I guess, both competing interests, and it, uh, the railroad, we're putting a tunnel on, through the railroad embankment, um, and there's really not a good place to do it. Um, I'll let the consultant go through the whole list of reasons why the city prefers it on the west-hand side. Um, UVA prefers it on the east, um, so that's kind of where we're at, and I'll turn it over to our consultant to kind of go through all those reasons.
Good evening, I'm John Stewart, we're the consulting engineering firm, uh, Clark-Nexon, working for the city. And this is just gonna walk through, really, the layouts that we've come up with at this stage of the concept designs. Uh, starting out with the background, this is just basically summarizing what Brennan had explained earlier about, really, this is incorporating bike lanes and a ten-foot asphalt multi-use path, which you'll also hear called a shared use path. So it's really incorporating those improvements from Ivy up to Arlington. Activities to date, uh, since we started, we've done, uh, the survey work, uh, getting all the existing topography and information. We've had a steering committee meeting in April, a community information meeting on the twelfth, end of May. Uh, we've also completed a multimodal traffic study, which has given us good data for making sure that what we design will work. And then we've also developed some concepts that we're gonna, um, be presenting at the steering committee meeting on the ninth of, uh, August, this Thursday. So the overall schedule, where we are, we're really at that orange circle, the second orange circle from the left in the preliminary design stage, so we've got the concept options that we're going through, and our goal is, is to work to the preferred option. Um, and then the rest of the schedule shows what's gonna happen down the road. But really, right now, we're focused, uh, getting to that thirty percent design stage. So moving forward, the concept options that we've looked at are really, it's important that we make sure that we don't impact traffic to make it any worse, it's a very busy corridor, so, uh, our goal is to really do no harm and make sure that it stays functional. But the biggest part of it are the last three items, are incorporating the bike lanes to improve overall multimodal access, uh, and then the shared use path, which is a ten-foot wide asphalt path that is open to, uh, both bikes and pedestrians, runners, and overall improve the walkability of the corridor. The big, the big starting point is the Ivy Intersection, and we've looked at this, uh, very closely to make sure that the lane configurations, this intersection functions well. You're gonna see some bike boxes and some other things that are gonna be a little different.
Oh, wow.
But again, to make sure that this intersection functions well, uh, allows for bikes and pedestrian access to get through safely. Uh, this has been done in coordination, uh, to make sure that UVA, the development for the Ivy Corridor, uh, that they're doing, uh, that it functions along with that, and doesn't really, uh, affect that development at all. Uh, really making sure that the traffic works really well, too. So going into, really, the main discussion tonight is about the location of the shared use path. And it's coming down to, really, where is it gonna go underneath the railroad bridge? Um, you see the train, and then to the right here, that's a close-up of, right now, it's just a, basically, about a four-foot opening underneath the railroad, and that's very constricting, um, and in order to get a ten-foot, uh, multi-use, uh, shared use path underneath, we've gotta poke a hole underneath the railroad. So which side to do it on? Um, it is a older bridge built in nineteen thirty-four, but it's structurally sound, and the railroad, uh, wants to make sure that it is not harmed, uh, with anything we do on the project, so we've gotta make sure we do that. The basic, uh, layout of it is it's a sixteen-foot wide pipe, basically, uh, this is a very sound structure. This is an early concept we're considering, this is not the definitive, uh, final solution, but this just shows the opening that you're looking at to provide vertical clearance of ten feet and horizontal clearance of twelve feet. So that's, uh, just an example of what, of, of how these have been done before in other locations. Uh, you see the inline skating, so yes, it's a very old picture. So, where to put the path? Um, the, locationally, this is the, uh, old Excel Inn site there, in the white block on the east side of, uh, Emmett. So just looking at this, uh, west is to the, to the top of the page, uh, south is to the left, and then north is to the right. So really looking at the options are, on the east side, in order to get underneath the railroad, uh, the, uh, the path has to go to the east about a hundred and fifty feet. Uh, the tunnel is skewed slightly to, to try to get in, uh, underneath the railroad as quickly as we can, and then it runs behind the hotel, and then back up towards, uh, Emmett Street. So this is one of the options we looked at initially on the east side. Looking at, looking at the concepts with UVA and the Ivy Corridor team, uh, they did have a suggestion that they asked us to consider, and that's an option that we're showing here, of crossing underneath the railroad and then running it parallel to Carsfield. So what you can see between the hotel and Carsfield is a stream, so there's a small pedestrian bridge that would have to go in place to, uh, cross the stream. So that is another option that we looked at, that basically ties directly into University Avenue. So that was another, another, uh, possibility that we looked at. So now we're gonna, uh, look at some photos. This is facing west on the north side of the railroad, you can see the parking for Lambeth Commons area, the parking area. And what you've got is the railroad fill to the right, uh, a stream, and then the parking lot. And that red line represents approximately where the trail would have to go. Uh, there's some old growth trees, this was in the wintertime, it's overgrown now, where it's really hard to see, but that's a general location of where the trail would go. This is a picture a little further to the west, but looking up at the railroad fill. Again, that line is the approximate location of where the trail would have to go. And another photo, looking straight at the railroad fill, uh, the, the interesting aspect of this is we literally need to incorporate the trail at the bottom of the railroad fill while also not impacting the stream, because we wanna make sure that stays fully functional and, uh, minimize or no impacts is our, is what would be our goal. Going to, uh, the south side of the railroad, this is a general representation of what that opening might look like. Uh, you can see the Excel Inn after the fire, uh, and then Cars Hill Field to the right. That's just an approximate location of where that opening would come out. You see the stream that would have to be, uh, dealt, dealt with, that we would also definitely have to, uh, wanna avoid. So now we are going to switch over to what the west side would look like. Uh, this is, uh, really with Ivy Intersection to the left on the south end up to the railroad, uh, that just shows how this would be incorporated in front of the Ivy Corridor Development. Uh, this really has, uh, a few feet more into that property than maybe they had originally planned, but it, it's really fairly minor in the scheme of things in how it, it can be incorporated into, uh, what's being planned. And this is a close-up again, showing, the railroad does require that any new pipelines or facilities that are put in have to have a forty-five-foot offset, so we are maintaining that requirement that CSX Railroad has in, uh, putting the tunnel in with that required offset. So the goal is, is to move the shared use path over, get it underneath the railroad, and then back over to Emmett Street. And this shows the general location, uh, and just to the left there is where the bus stop would be located that would be, uh, directly adjacent to the roadway, and the shared use path would be right, right behind it. Uh, this is a picture on the north side of the railroad, looking up at the parking deck. Uh, you see the railroad at the, about the middle, and then the parking deck, uh, over at the Ivy Corridor Development. And this is, uh, this just shows the grading at that location that would have to be, we'd have to excavate into that and put in a retaining wall at the tunnel entrance, but, uh, we don't see that as a, a major difficulty. And then, uh, the Villa Diner is on the left there, that they actually put the fence up the day we took this picture. So, uh, that, that's a representation of approximately where the opening would be on the south side of the railroad for the western option. Um, and I'm not sure how much, how many more days the Villa Diner has, but, uh, it was there when we took the picture.
Already closed?
Closed, yeah, I was there one of the last weekends, I think, but, uh. So really, it came down to an assessment of what is the best location, and through an evaluation of information, data that we've got, uh, we came down to recommending the western, western side, because it comes down to some key, uh, elements, including safety, connectivity, and the environmental and railroad impacts that we think are gonna have to be dealt with on the east side if we, if it goes on that location. The safety concerns are, really, you can see it with the hundred and fifty-foot offset, it's, it's pretty far away from the road, and that, uh, we would certainly do everything we could in terms of lighting to improve safety, but the fact that it is so far off of the road, the limited visibility makes it less inviting, and we think, uh, especially in hours of darkness, it, it's, people would be less inclined to use it. Uh, it is more indirect, uh, uh, going away from the road, where, uh, people usually go the path of least resistance. Uh, I do wanna note that the sidewalk would be maintained underneath the railroad, so that still would be available. Uh, and just behind the hotel, uh, we've seen some recent rains this summer as well. That stream, uh, can take on, uh, it takes on a lot of water and can be prone to flooding. Uh, I think the hotel is probably, in Carsfield, have experienced some of that over the years. So that would be something that we definitely would, uh, need to make sure we address. As far as connectivity, really, a lot of the activity is on the western side of Emmett Street. Uh, you can see from the zoning, there's really more urban development with the yellow representing residential, and really with the event activities at JPJ, uh, and other, other activities. Staying on the west side of Emmett makes a lot more sense for direct access for pedestrians using it and getting to the transit on the other side of the railroad. Public comments that we had in May, uh, was more in favor of the western side. That was just at that one meeting, but from that meeting, we did get more comments in favor of, uh, if you had to decide between the west side and the east side, based on the information, uh, the west side had a higher percentage. And then, uh, really the environmental concerns, looking at the aerial photo, you see the stream on the right side. We would just have to make sure that whatever we route, we would have to, uh, stay out of the stream as much as possible. I think we can do it, but that would involve some retaining structures, we would definitely have railing on the trail. And then next to the hotel, we would, again, also have to have retaining structures, probably railing to make sure that we stay out of the stream as much as possible. Uh, anything we do around the railroad, we have to be very mindful of, because they do not like their facilities to be impacted. So we'd really have to make sure we don't do anything that would infringe on their, uh, on their facilities. on their facilities. Same concerns of the flooding that I had mentioned, that were mentioned before. So really it comes down to the west tunnel again. This is, this is where it's closer to Emmett Street. And I think another option that was presented, I'm going to shift back to the east here, that the Ivy Corridor Development Team wanted to propose, was this option on the east side, right up next to the hotel property. We have some concerns about this. Number one, that it really isn't a representation of the building footprint, which really extends pretty close to the, the road. And this is just not viable with at least the current development plans that, that we understand are being proposed for rebuilding on that site. So with the engineering concerns, again, being so close to the building footprint, this does not really reflect the cafe that's being proposed on, for the on-street, making that an active street use, I guess is what it's called, or activating the street. So this really doesn't meet that requirement, with, with also some engineering concerns about being so close to the building.
And there's also an access point for cars to go into that building?
There is a parking deck for that facility, so there would be a lot of cars going in and out of that hotel. And crossing the shared use path would be, it'd be, it'd be delicate operation to, to be safe.
The current uses, the, the current, I guess, bicycle and pedestrian counts that we have on Emmett Street was about 750 to 800 a day. So combine that with, you know, a, a few hundred vehicles a day that are, are going in and out of there. It's an increased conflict point versus the lone access point that we would be crossing on the university side, on the west side. They've told us that that, that is going to be kind of a emergency, not emergency access, but you know, back of house, like deliveries, that kind of stuff. So it's, it's going to be, you know, two, three, five times a week type of use versus, you know, multiple times a day, every day.
Yeah, that, that's a very important point to bring out as well, that safety concerns for the eastern locations, particularly in this configuration. So really the next steps of, with, with this information, giving City Council this, this information, our next steps are, we are moving forward with our technical committee meeting this Thursday. And this is really, we're going to update on what concept options have been developed at this point. And our goal is to work towards a preferred concept towards the end of September. And then that would then go through the Planning Commission and City Council approval, review and approval process in October and November. And really work towards, our goal would be a Citizens Information Meeting in November, December timeframe. So hopefully this has been helpful. If you've got any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
So I'm, I'm just curious what the process is, like the negotiations that possibly need to take place, because considering there are two different perspectives on this, and what is the city's kind of leverage that we have in this process? And you know, what conversations can we have proactively to help with that?
So when it comes down to, I guess, the, the nuts and bolts of this, you know, the city has very little leverage, like actual leverage on, on UVA. You know, it's a state agency. We can't, if we decide this is the way the city wants to go and they refuse to sell us the land, we cannot condemn state land. So you know, if, if it came to, to that point, a, a complete impasse, which we hope it doesn't, I mean, we're, we're continuing to work with them and, and present our case as best we can. But you know, worst-case scenario, we, we couldn't construct this and we would have to give the money back.
And this is $12 million?
Yeah, it was a $12 million, million-dollar project that was submitted.
Okay. So, and there really is a, the last correspondence that we got from, from the UVA representative was that they would agree to pay for the improvements on the east side, but not on the west side. That was kind of what the implication was.
So, so they, I mean, throughout the last 18 months working with UVA, they, they are essentially constructing the multi-use path on the west side, whether we do anything or not. They, they, they have it as a 10-foot concrete sidewalk. We would have it as a 10-foot asphalt path. It's semantics, it's the same thing. You know, we've talked with, with VDOT, they, they have no issue with UVA constructing it. You know, their, their timeline is ahead of ours anyway. So you know, them doing it doesn't preclude, you know, us, it doesn't exempt us from our project or anything like that. You know, really the only thing that we would still be doing would be, you know, the intersection improvements, the bike lanes. We would still be constructing all of that on the west side. But as far as this path goes, up until the point that it gets to the railroad, they're constructing it regardless of our project.
But they won't put in a tunnel?
And we're not, we are not asking them to. We're, I mean, we've fully said that, you know, the tunnel is us, we're paying for the tunnel, whichever side it is. So I'm not sure where they're getting that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the issue is then.
They, they really just don't want it on that side.
They don't want the tunnel on that side?
They don't want the tunnel on that side. You know, their, their original planning document that goes back to 2013, you know, they, they had, their consultant had shown it on the east side, but their consultant had also showed it going underneath the railroad trestle, not a separate tunnel at that time. And, and since that, and I guess there was discussion even after that report came out, that, you know, east versus west. But we, we've done our analysis. We can't, we can't really remove any lanes underneath of the railroad trestle in order to fit it through without detrimentally affecting the traffic. You know, that, that extra lane in the southbound direction is really needed for, for stacking and everything else to, to not fail that intersection. I mean, it's already, it's already bad today. And, and our, our goal in this is to hopefully improve it somewhat, but not make it any worse, while at the same time improving pedestrian, bicycle, and, and transit. So that's, that's really our goal of this, is to increase those other modes without failing the intersection. If we, like I said, if we remove traffic in order to fit it underneath the trestle, we would fail traffic. So that's, that's really, you know, we have to, in order to do this project, we have to do a tunnel.
Okay.
It either has to be on the east side or the west. Those are our only two options. And you know, we're, that's, that's where we're at.
So the, I'm just trying to get a sense then, is, I guess the way, the only leverage is that, is a desire to foster goodwill between the city and the university.
Yeah, I mean.
So, and if they're so close already with building a multi-use trail on the west side?
They're, can, can you go back to?
Yeah, because it's just a matter of eating up some space, more space for building?
Yeah, so the, I, I'm not sure if it's, if their issues are more to the north of the railroad, where our trail comes out, if they have development, you know, that they're planning there and they just don't want this trail to hinder those future development possibilities. But on, on the south side, it, it really has very little impact. I mean, they, it would cross that driveway, but I've, I've had many conversations with them about that, the location of that driveway. It's, it's not, it's not an ideal location. And if it was, I, I already told them that originally they had showed it as an access point to the garage. And I said, we, we can't do that. You can't, you can't have it that close to the, the railroad trestle. The, the sightlines don't, don't work. So you know, when it was just going to be a, you know, very limited use, you know, four or five, six times a day, or a week, or whatever, you know, we can work around the, the safety aspects of that for, you know, time of day and that kind of stuff. So again, you know, you've got, you know, bicycles and pedestrians that are interacting with a driveway that's only being used a half dozen times a week. I, I don't see that as a significant impact to their project. You know, they do have, you know, a transit stop that will be on that side, that they're concerned about, the bikes, the multi-use path interacting with people waiting at the transit stop. But in all honesty, I think they're going to have those, with, with their 10-foot sidewalk anyway, they're going to have cyclists that use it.
And then the cyclist will have to just stop at the, and get on-street? When they go under the?
So there, there's going to be a bike lane under both, on both sides.
Okay.
So if, so, so really the issue is, is you have two kinds of cyclists. You have the, you know, the people who commute and feel comfortable on the road, and you have the much more leisure cyclists or those who just don't feel safe that close to traffic. So you know, the, the multi-use trail is really for more of that recreational or those who just don't feel comfortable right next to vehicles. So you know, I think we're going, it will be used and, and I think it will be used a lot. You know, the Ivy Corridor plan is five or six times the square foot of what's there now with, with new plans. So that's going to be a new hub for the university. It's going to draw a lot of people. They already have all of the, you know, arenas and, and all that event traffic. You know, it's, it's the city's position that the west side serves the greatest purpose for everyone.
So there, you, you've got a, a technical meeting on Thursday, when they're, this is going to be like one of the, like are they going to be showing you more detail? Is that when you're going to probably find out why they're so resistant to this?
I mean, they, they, we provided their, their letter for, for why they're resistant to it. We've countered all of their points. And even with those, they're still, you know, would, would rather not. So we're, we're moving forward to Steering Committee really with those three concepts that we showed, the, you know, the west side and then the two separate ones on the east. But it's still, I mean, it's still the city's position that the west, you know, hits as, as many of the goals, you know, as we can with, with safety and accessibility and everything else, so.
So would it help your argument if council endorsed the west, your western recommendation?
It couldn't hurt.
So.
I'm also confused, like, because their east side is different than the version that you've shown. You show one going behind the building and they're showing one in the front, which I think is really abutting the property and?
Right, yeah. And if, you know, head back that way, John. So for instance, this one, again, it, with, with Galleries Court's hotels' site plan, they've, they've amended it after going to Planning Commission to, to get more street activation. Even without that, what they're showing there, you, you'd have to create, you'd, you'd have to tunnel from two directions at an angle and, and meet in the middle, which from, from a constructibility standpoint is, is difficult at best. You know, we're also, you know, where they're showing that come out is essentially in the, the embankment. So I mean, it, it works when you're drawing it as a, a 2D drawing, but, but when you go to construct it or in 3D, it's, it's very difficult. So it, it might look viable, but from the actual constructibility, and the same thing with this. You know, they have that, the joint just south is essentially, you know, underground, so you'd, you'd have to bore from two different directions in order to do that.
Thank you. Well, Amir Walker, I don't, not, there is no formal motion here, but there, we could make a statement endorsing staff's recommendations as they go into the negotiations with the UVA Tech Committee. And staff has said that that couldn't, couldn't hurt.
Yeah, it's just, it's just open for discussion.
So is there, may I ask, is there any appetite for making a statement for the record so that?
Sure. Would you be crafting it, Ms.?
I was just saying, just moved that we, that the City Council endorses staff's recommendations for the western multi-use path and tunnel.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would be in favor of that.
So I guess, so I made that motion and seconded it.
Yeah.
Amir Walker, we have a?
Your vote?
Yeah. Okay, you got it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let us know what happens.
And that's, and I'm abstaining.
Thank you for hanging out.
Thank you very much for staying so late.
Oh my gosh, they've all.
All right, so now we are at other business consenting, resolution consenting to the declaration of local emergency within the city of Charlottesville.
Madam Mayor, the, the essence of this item is simply that the city may, at some point, need to declare a local emergency for a number of reasons, not the least of which is to access resources. And the code requires in local government that council authorize the city manager to do so ahead of time, whenever there are not observable circumstances already happening, right? So if a flood's happening, I can declare a state of local emergency. And then the next time you all meet, or any time within 45 days, you can then accept that that happened. In the case where it may happen proactively, as is likely to happen in our preparation for August 10, 11, 12, it requires your consent ahead of time. And so the resolution is worded just in that manner, that you authorize that the city manager will be able to do so. And I'm happy to answer any questions, as will Ms. Davies.
So would we know beforehand? Would council know before the decision is made?
So, so you're, you're authorizing consent for Mike Murphy to make the declaration of emergency? It's getting really late. And I think you could certainly ask him to notify you at the time that he was inclined to make that declaration. I suspect that, that historically y'all have been a part of press, you know, press conferences or releases that would involve that declaration of emergency, so. Does that answer your question?
This just gives him the flexibility to make that declaration without having to pause.
Yeah, and I, I think that, I think the code is very clear that, that y'all need to consent to his authority to make this declaration of emergency, especially in a situation where, where it might not be a situation where there's, there's like a hurricane or a flood or some, you know, imminent threat, then you, you're required to make that consent.
I think, I think in these circumstances also, right, in our effort to best coordinate with our partners at the state.
Right.
And with the recognition that there may be intelligence that we have that would cause us to want to make that declaration ahead of time, to make sure that we have adequate resources.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is very much a declaration that allows you to authorize the resources, the combined resources of your emergency management plan and the state planning and all of those things. And you certainly don't want to be in a position where you're trying to call everyone together in the middle of a crisis.
All right, can I make a motion? I move we adopt the resolution consenting to the declaration of a local emergency within the city of Charlottesville.
Second. Any further discussion? No. All right. All right. Carrie's four to one. All right, so now we're back to the final public comment section. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
My name is Louis Schultz, 1809 East Marcus Street. During the discussion about the ratification of Mr. Murphy's contract, I realized the mistake I had made in not speaking earlier, as I'd intended to. If we look at Section 2 of Mr. Murphy's contract, which was in the agenda tonight, if anyone at home wants to look, if they're still awake, Section 2B says, "The term of employment shall not exceed a one-year term in accordance with provisions of Virginia Code, Section 15.2-1503, without the adoption and approval of a new interim appointment agreement." There's a really good reason for that. Virginia Code, Section 15.2-1503, says, "All appointments of officers and hiring of other employees by locality shall be without definite term unless their temporary service is not to exceed one year." Counsel and city attorney's office are obviously aware of that law, so there's a lot of explaining to do regarding what actually happened legally on July 2nd, when counsel voted not to renew Maurice Jones's employment contract, which was purportedly due to expire in December at the end of a five-year definite term. There are some obvious problems with that, since by law, a law that is known to everyone involved in that vote, including, including Maurice Jones himself, his contract can't legally be for a definite term and therefore can't require renewal. Counsel has never voted to terminate Jones's employment, only not to renew, which is a completely different thing. Unless Mr., Mr., unless Mr. Jones- Unless Mr. Jones has somehow terminated his own employment, which has not been reported, it would appear that he's still legally the city manager. Maybe council wants to take the position that Mr. Jones's contract was never actually valid because it was always in conflict with state law. Virginia Code, Section 1.1-248, says any ordinance, resolution, bylaw, rule, regulation or order of any governing body shall not be inconsistent with the laws of the Commonwealth. Under that theory, since Jones's contract refers to its prohibited definite term no less than nine times, no resolution of council to approve the signing of Mr. Jones's contract was ever actually legal and the city never had a contract with Jones. That was my belief when I first informed Wes Bellamy of problems with Jones's contract way back in December of 2015. I pushed Mr. Bellamy repeatedly in public to discuss the issue, and on March 21, 2016, at Mr. Bellamy's request, former city attorney Craig Brown finally gave a response that ignored the issue I had raised and substituted a straw man argument about at-will employment. Section 15.2-1503 says nothing about at-will employment. It does, however, clearly forbid employment for a definite term of more than a year, which Mr. Jones's contract unmistakably had within it. Section 5. E of the city's charter does, does say that the city manager, quote, "shall serve at the pleasure of council." That is about at-will employment. In its 2016, Virginia, in 2016, Virginia Supreme Court wrote in its Johnson versus William E. Woods decision that, quote, "imposing a requirement of reasonable advance notice is antithetical to the flexibility that lies at the heart of the at-will doctrine and would undermine the indefinite duration element of at-will employment." Mr. Murphy's proposed contract imposes, imposes a requirement of advance notice for termination and so appears not to comply with the charter. And there's another issue, when council did decide that it wasn't going to renew Mr. Jones's non-renewable, you know, contract that didn't need renewal, there was some mention of, of the possibility of an agreement that it would come to an earlier termination than December, when it was, if we take the contract as actually having value, it was, was supposed to come to, to an end. And I don't recall council ever having actually publicly voted on an agreement with Mr. Jones to have his contract end earlier than December. So I, I'm pretty sure that Maurice Jones is actually still our city manager.
Paige, didn't we, did we vote?
We confirmed the letter. You voted on it.
Right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I just want to say two things. One is, in addition to the white fragility thing I said earlier, is when white people come together and use their power to silence black people, it's also, it's white fragility and white supremacy, and it's really sad, it's been happening for centuries, so it makes me, it makes me angry. And Mayor Walker, thank you again, and every time I listen to you speak, I leave the room much smarter, so thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to say one thing. Emmercarl's been thinking a lot about the whole Mr. Murphy and his ratifying the contract. I actually support Mr. Murphy and I want to make sure that he knows that he has my support. I think he's going to do a great job. My issue was the fact that we just wouldn't take another day for the five of us to get together, like Mayor Walker was suggesting. I mean, to me, it, it wasn't that big of a deal. But I hope Mr. Murphy knows that he has my support. I just don't agree with how we came about it tonight, after having the full discussion, so I wanted that to be clear.
All right, anyone?
Can I suggest that you guys just do have that meeting? I mean, it might change it that it's a fait accompli, but it was already a fait accompli before, so for you guys to meet up and get on the same page and resolve your differences might be helpful for working together in the future.
All right, anyone else? All right, meeting adjourned.
Make sure you're at the academy on time tomorrow.
Good luck.
We have some kids to work with.